... jobs report, which showed 353,000 new jobs were created last month, many more than expected. I'm Nancy Marshall Genzer for Marketplace.
The Organization of Bigger Economies, the OECD, today pushed up its forecast for global economic growth this year. It was thinking a growth rate of 2.7% last fall, but now it's up at 2.9% given strength in the U.S. economy in particular, even as inflation comes down here. The Eurozone's growth has been adjusted downward. The OECD says a tax on shipping by Houthis rebels forcing cargo ships to reroute could add 4 tenths of 1% to global consumer inflation this year. Markets, S&amp;P, and Dow futures are both down 3 tenths percent now. Nasdaq futures are down 2 tenths of a percent.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Odoo, provider of an all-in-one management platform with a suite of fully integrated applications designed to simplify and connect every aspect of business in one software. More at Odoo.com. And by UKG, an HR payroll and workforce management solution designed to help make a fairy tale workplace a reality. UKG, our purpose is people.
My neighbor and I have a home brew going, supposedly five gallons of something that, with luck, might end up tasting like Anchor Steam from the famed brewery in San Francisco that, as we reported, went out of business last year. For pianist and conductor Bill Edens, his home brewing helped prompt a business idea. It's called Metronome, a brewery with the goal of supporting music education in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. The operation already has some 390 performances under its belt, from youth bands to local groups. They even featured a night with jazz legend Wynton Marsalis. Edens and local musician Jack Schabert give a taste of what Metronome is all about.
My name is William Edens, but most people call me Bill, except for the IRS. I am the co-owner and chief design officer of Metronome Brewery. We've had many young people play at Metronome, and for me, that's actually the most fun. I see me from many, many decades ago. I talked my buddy Wynton Marsalis into playing at Metronome in September of '22. It was one of the most incredible experiences of my life. Instead of getting a seasoned trio of professionals to play with him, I roped in three young people. The bassist was the youngest at the ripe old age of 19. The pianist was the oldest at 25. So two of the three couldn't even drink at the brewery.
I'm a drummer in the Twin Cities, and I sent Bill an email asking if he was looking for shows, and we booked a show. And a couple of months later, I get an email from him asking if I wanted to perform with Wynton Marsalis, which was a bit of a shock. That was a lot of fun to perform with somebody of that caliber and learn like that. You can't really learn some of the stuff I learned that night, just practicing by yourself.
As great as the performance was, the rehearsal was even better because here was Wynton Marsalis, one of the most famous musicians on the planet, essentially giving these three kids a masterclass on how to put together a performance, what they should do in certain tunes, this and that and the other, and giving them little tips. It was such an incredible experience. Music has been such an incredible focus point of my life and also my wife's life that...
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our nine o'clock a.m. session of City Council in our joint meeting with Roanoke City School Board. It's good to see everybody this morning. I'm going to ask our clerk to please call the roll for council.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Wallison?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Mayor Lee is absent, and Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here. And a quorum is present. And I will ask our school board clerk to call the roll for school board.
Mrs. A. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Gasola?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Ms. Watchens?
Dr. Jamison?
Here. And for school board, is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented?
So...
Mr. Chair, seconded by Mr. Kathy. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have an agenda for the school board.
All right. Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to remind the audience that may be watching today that council meetings are televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and video streamed through Facebook Live at Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. So again, I want to welcome everyone today. This is the first of our 2024 joint meetings, and we're grateful to the school board. And Dr. Jamison, I think we've got a lot of people in the audience who are here with the schools today. Do you want to do some quick introductions or acknowledgements?
Certainly. Well, first, we're always happy to have you here. Perhaps I'd ask Dr. White if you would introduce your team who's here for us today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm always pleased to introduce my team. First, we have Kathleen Jackson, our chief financial officer. She's here. Kelly Sandridge is our chief communications officer. Archie Freeman is our chief academic officer, and Chris Perkins is our chief operations officer. Also, we also have Rita Huffman and Dawn Winterware, our clerks, and Dominic McKee. I'm sorry, Dominic. He's our chief of human resources, and everybody knows David. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. White. All right. We have our agenda before us today, and we've got a lot of items to cover today. We're going to start with the priorities for 2024-2025 budgets and ESAR, and then we'll move through those, and we'll come back to the first item after Mayor Lee gets here. So, Dr. Jamison, I'll just turn it over to you, I guess. Do we want to just go through these and...
Sure. And I think in speaking with the mayor last week, and I hope everybody has received the same information, we got a packet of information to you ahead of time. So what we hope to do with these agenda items is make a quick summary comments about them and then open them up to any particular questions that we may or may not have responded to. And certainly, I'm glad we've had the introductions because if we're talking about our priorities for 2024-25, I would ask Dr. White to provide that summary for us.
All right. Very good. And good morning again. First, I would like to take a moment just to thank City Council and the school board for your continued support of public education. As you may know, and as discussed during our last budget work group session, we are serving the same number of students that we served a decade ago, yet we have greater needs. We see more students with developmental delays. We see more students with special needs. We're seeing more students with behavioral and social emotional needs. And so those needs are greater, and it's because of your support that we're able to meet those needs on a daily basis. And so I just wanted to take a moment just to thank you for your continued support of public education. So the first item on your agenda has to do with the budget. And as Dr. Jamison said on Friday, we provided you with a lot of information in preparation for today's discussion that we've also provided to you in your blue folder, so you should have a blue folder in front of you. And that brings me again to our first item. So our priorities for the 24-25 budget and information related to the drawdown of our ESAR funds. And as you know, we are looking and we are heading into some very lean fiscal years, particularly as ESAR funds are drawing down. And so we've been very, very responsible with those funds, as we said during the last legislative meeting that we had together, which is one of the reasons why our fiscal team continues to win the awards that they do, and I'm so proud of that. We are very... We take our fiscal responsibility very, very seriously. So we are drawing down on those ESAR funds, and we are heading into some pretty lean fiscal years moving forward. So at this time, I'll ask our chief financial officer, Kathleen Jackson, to come forward and just to give you a brief overview. Again, you got the information ahead of time, but give you an overview of that 24-25 budget, the priorities, and the drawdown for ESAR funds. Mrs. Jackson?
Thank you. Good morning, Vice Mayor Cobb, and Chair Dr. Jamison, and members of City Council and school board. As Dr. White said, this is a little bit of a tougher budget development year than we've had the last few years because we did have that ESAR pandemic relief funding to assist us, which is coming to a close September 30 of the coming year. So just briefly, what we have discussed thus far at the most recent school board work session, we chiefly focused on looking at our personnel costs. About 3/4 of our budget is personnel, so that is the main focus and area where that impacts our budget. And of course, it's important that we focus there on what positions we need, what raises we can do, that sort of thing. So we did share with the school board at that time the budgetary impact of various raise options. We looked at the variance between a 2% up to a 5%. We'd been able to do at least a 5% the last couple of years, but as Dr. White said, this is a leaner time, so we'll do the best that we can. But that budget impact is anywhere between about a $3 million additional cost and an $8 million if we were to go all the way up to the 5%. So at this point, we're looking at the additional funds that we have been... That has been shared with us in the preliminary revenue projections for next year from the city, which is a little over $6.5 million additional compared to the current year budget. In the information you have in your packet, there's not additional state funding factored in at this point. The preliminary budget from the administration at the state level did not have a particularly positive impact on Roanoke City Public Schools. We are hearing favorable information out of the General Assembly, but of course, we don't have that information yet. So we're hopeful that we might have more flexibility once we have the various budget versions from the House and Senate at the state level. I know the drawdown of ESAR and our use of those funds is paramount to all of us, and I think our school division has done a good job of using those funds for a variety of needs, particularly as best we can, one-time needs. We were able to expand instructional space at Breckenridge and double our seat capacity for career technical by opening the day tech center. But of course, the main focus of that funding is to help us with combating learning loss and dealing with the impact of the pandemic, particularly in those first few years. So naturally, we do have some personnel tied to those funds. So that is a main focus of our budget development this year, looking at those positions that are currently grant funded and making those decisions of what positions do we need to keep? Are there positions that we do not need that, you know, have kind of served their purpose or positions that can move into vacancies, that sort of thing? We do not anticipate the need to have a reduction in force or anything of that nature. And any kind of positions that are grant funded that might not be needed can be taken care of through attrition and filling vacancies that we have. Naturally, we also have other state funds that are helping us with absorbing some of those positions. We have the one-time funding the state put into the budget the current year called All In Virginia. That has a heavy focus on tutoring. We have tutoring positions we've been using ESAR funds for, so that's a natural transition there. So that's fortunate that we can do that, as well as student support specialists. Another focus of the All In Virginia is chronic absenteeism. So that's something that those positions really focus on, and we were able to add through the ESAR funds and can continue for the next couple of years with those state grant funds. So that is kind of in a nutshell where we are right now. At our next school board meeting, we'll kind of focus in on the non-personnel side of needs that have been shared across the departments of our school division and move forward from there. But any questions or comments?
Thank you. Are there questions? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
You may have answered it, but my ears are stocked up, so I apologize in advance. Under the federal pandemic relief funding that you spoke of, you were... I believe there was instructional aids listed under that. And when I was looking through here, there is no current funding to put those... To have those instruction aids to stay in the classrooms with the teachers. How are you all having any way of funding those to make sure that there is some assistance for the teachers?
Well, we certainly do have many instructional assistants that are either locally funded or already funded out of continuation grants, such as many of those positions support students with disabilities. So some of those are grant funded through IDEA grant funds, so that is staying in place. In terms of those that are... That were added through the ESAR funds, that is part of the discussion is looking at, you know, where the priorities. Where do we really need to keep these positions? And if so, how do we make that happen? Or if we just can't do that, then there are vacant instructional assistant positions that those individuals can easily move into, that we don't feel like there would ever be a situation where we would... Where anyone would lose their job.
Right. I was just more concerned about the teachers, trying to help them when you've got a large classroom of elementary school kids. I go into the classrooms to read, and I see that in some of the classrooms where they're, you know, you're trying to teach and you're trying to deal with disciplinary problems in the classrooms. And I just think that is something that hopefully we can... The government, the legislators, whatever, state funding, there could be money to make sure that when we speak about wanting to take care of our kids, that is one of the things I look at, you know, how serious this is government. How serious are we in putting funding in place to make sure these kids are educated?
And I will say that that is one area of note in terms of state funding of positions and meeting the standards of quality that I believe was focused in on through the J-Lark study that I know a lot of us have talked about.
Yes, the J-Lark, yes.
That is particularly underfunded in terms of the number of instructional assistant positions that all school divisions in Virginia have versus the number that actually receive partial funding from the state. So that is certainly something that we would hope would get a little bit of additional support at the state level, and I know that's being looked at.
Yeah, I hope they will look at it from the J-Lark study, showing that you should be looking at more ratio to students versus the ratio to the teachers. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions on this one? I did have a follow-up, something you mentioned about the all-in funding for tutoring. Actually, met a young man the other night who is one of these tutors at Highland Park. Can you talk a little bit about how many tutors you were able to hire throughout the city, if you know that, as part of this?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Just anyone have that handy?
We don't have the exact number because we also use IT teachers, which I will talk a little bit about later on in the presentation. We do use IT teachers during the day, and they have an opportunity to do tutoring, too, so separate from our actual separate tutor that may be working, that have been coming in from outside is a little bit different.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Ms. Jackson, how many student support specialists were hired with ESAR funds?
Six.
Six. Will you plan to find additional funding to get more, being that truance is a big concern for everyone in the country at this point?
Certainly, that's not my decision, but I will certainly work with our instructional staff on making sure that we are meeting our student needs and have the appropriate ratios to make sure that we are in a position to do that. I don't know if that would result in even more positions, but candidly, my focus has been on maintaining the ones that we have and making sure that we can continue those. But that certainly is always part of the discussion, not just what does our staffing look like right now, but what does it need to be? And I know our human resources team meets with our principals and schools and instructional leaders every year to look at enrollment and look at all of those, the various needs and the makeup of the student population for where we might need additional, maybe special ed teachers or English learner teachers or student support specialists. That kind of thing is always evaluated on an annual basis.
And I'm going to say this, I'm personally thankful that extra student support specialists were added because I'm a student support specialist, and that lessened my load for elementary and middle school. So thank you.
Good.
Mr. Pretty?
Vice Mayor Cobb? I really don't directly have a question. I think my council members have generally covered it. But the reason why I sought to include this priorities session on the agenda was just to make sure that council had an opportunity to share what we like to see in school board's budget. And vice versa, for our buddies to reach out to us and see us in budget development. I know we don't have a formal ability to influence each other's budgets other than through the revenue sharing agreement that we have and that stays in place with the school board. But personally, just to make sure that people, safety, and academic progress stay at top line. I know that you all are working hard to put people first, to focus on personnel, and in the past, it's been on raises where we've been able to have the funds, but where ESAR funds may have some compression issues, I expect are being felt across the Commonwealth. They'll be put in a similar situation, but that we have a raise that will help us retain the talent that we do have so that we know that the teachers coming back next year, a lot of the teachers that people had this current year. But also, as Council member Moon Reynolds brought up, to make sure that we have the support that staff needs so that their ability to do a better job and focus on what they're doing, making sure that they have the ability to have a duty-free lunch, that they feel a little bit less stressed throughout their day, because money's not always what keeps people in a job. It's also the quality of life that they experience in it. The academic progress, I know you already brought up the issues that we're going to see around some of the grant funding, and then hopefully that'll be addressed again by the General Assembly. The last point I brought up, segment, was just regarding safety and concerns about how in the past, we had some funds that were available from the state that covered a significant portion of our SRO cost. And what does it look like for years going forward where we might not be able to rely on that full match from the state? How do we plan to be able to fund those positions?
Yes, you're right. It's my understanding, and please jump up if I misspeak, that we have reapplied for that grant. We haven't heard yet if we will have continuation funding to help us with both school resource officer positions and school security officer positions. We have two different grants that are helping us with funding those positions, but I certainly know that that's a priority. As you noted, the key priorities of our school division and safety is first and foremost up there. And so the school resource officers in our buildings are very important. So that is something that prior, we have not always had that grant funding, that we have budgeted in our school division budget to fund the school resource officer positions in our buildings. So we will continue to do that if we don't have grant funding, as that is a priority.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Lee, Dr. Jamison. Those are the only questions I had.
Well, if I could just add, Mr. Pretty, to that, on the end of concern for our teachers, because you're absolutely right, retention... I would just say that one of the ways we're also concerned about keeping our teachers has been a full-throated attention to retention. Look, I'm illiterative. I didn't mean to be. But we have been... There's been a lot with the complete overhaul of our HR, our exceptional HR department. But to all of those points, no system will be perfect, but as we find the imperfections, we are dedicated to remediating those issues because for sure, what matters is that we keep our excellent teachers. We don't... It's a lot... It's a lot better time and money spent investing on keeping your people than rehiring your people. So we hear you loud and clear, and we completely agree with that sentiment.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, you gave one example, Mr. Pretty, that I know is a priority of the school board, and it came directly to the superintendent from, I believe, the teacher advisory council, and that was duty-free lunch, that that's something that we have some lunch aids, but not across the board. some lunch aids, but not across the board at the elementary and middle school level. We are able to use some of our food service funds to help us make that happen, to minimize the impact on the budget. So that is something that I believe at our last school board meeting had unanimous support from the school board to move forward with. So that's a great example of how we're trying to do both, to look at keeping our pay and benefits competitive, but also looking at that additional support that matters quite a bit as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Good to see you here. We're going to just go right down the line, and I think next item, next item we need to discuss is cell phone use in classroom. And Councilmember Sanchez-Jones, you have that question?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take it real quick. I'm just handing something out to members of council if you'll pass this down. This is the policy that has passed the state senate that Senator Stanley has put in place, and this will be for them in the conference room, school board, and the clerk and Dr. White. A policy that just reaffirms what we already believe is existing in the code, but just sets out more explicitly that a school board can adopt a policy that regulates the use of them. And then the second piece of paper is a, is a piece of legislation that's federally being sought by our U.S. Senator Tim Kaine that would allow a pilot to see about locking up, not locking up, keeping cell phones from student use during the day and providing the funding for that, and then measuring how does that affect academic progress in it. But I know this is something that the school board will have to consider heavily. I'm going to turn it over to Sanchez-Jones.
I just, in lieu of what's going on in neighboring school districts that there's no cellphone use in the classrooms, I just want to know if the school board has thought of creating and implementing a cell phone policy.
Yeah, it is, I mean, that's a, we have it on our April workshop agenda. I kept saying our March, and then I realized we don't have a March workshop, but we have had it on our agenda to talk about this year. It has gotten pushed back for an assortment of different priorities that have come up, but we are committed to having a full investigation and looking into that. It has certainly come out throughout the year. But as a formal, we'd probably begin the official discussion and consideration of this issue in April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if that's all, I'll just bring up a few more points. Mary, I just know that there are a lot of considerations around this because you have opinions of teachers, you want to focus on academic progress, but you also have a lot of parents involved, and they pay for these cell phones and give them to their children. There's also the safety aspect that's brought into this and the situation that no family wants to find themselves in, something could happen at a school, they want to be able to be in touch with their child. So I know that there are a lot of things that your school board has to weigh in making this consideration, and I'm glad that I don't have to make that decision.
Thanks, Mr. Pretty. That's comforting. Councilman Pretty, and certainly don't want to speak behind our chair, but I just wanted to add that we'll be gauging those opinions as well through a survey of our teachers, our parents, and lending to Student Voice as well.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go back and start at the beginning with the report from Budget Working Group. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. So I want to thank Franny Appel and Joyce Watkins, who are part of this Budget Working Group, as well as Councilwoman Trish White Boyd and myself. We've had two meetings, the first on December 13th and the second this last week on February 1st. We've spent a lot of time reviewing the current funding formula policy and its history. We've taken a look at organization-wide funding sources, what some of the current realities and challenges are, including pain points for each organization, and we've shared a lot of comparative data. At our last meeting, we talked through a number of items. One was an agreement about asking and having the school board present their adopted budget to city council at our August meeting, which is our second joint meeting, which I think aligns with, timing-wise, appropriate. The second was to amend the current policy to move the date of distribution of funds from the 15th of the month to the end of the month. And then city council is interested in proposing potential revisions of the formula related to any transfer of year-end surplus to RCPS, and this is only about the surplus that would be effective fiscal year '25. So those are the items that we discussed. Those are continuing to be in discussion, and we would encourage any follow-up questions that any board members or council members would have, to send those through your appointees to this committee. We had originally planned to meet on the 29th, but Ms. Watkins can't be there, so we're going to look and see if the 22nd is available, but we will confirm that meeting time with you all. So that's our report.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is the status of a bus contract.
For that, for the bus contract and for the electric vehicles, I'm going to ask our chief operations officer, Chris Perkins, if he'll come forward and give you that status of the bus contract and to let you know what we're doing about EVs. Mr. Perkins.
Good morning, Mayor, Madam Chair, members of city council and school boards. Thank you for the question. The first one is pretty easy. As of yesterday, our school board attorney, and he's been working very hard on this, has provided us with a final contract draft for review. We hope to have a update to our school board on the February 13th meeting regarding our EV fleet. First and foremost, we have 12 electric vans in Roanoke City Public Schools fleet now with charging stations at our U. Charles W. Day Technical Education Center and at our downtown building across from here, the old Roanoke Time Building, the William Robertson Building. That was part of our strategic plan with regarding school buses and electric school buses. There's a lot of considerations we need to make for that, so I want to give you a list of about seven things that we're working through. But our potential vendor has a corporate goal of being electric by the year 2027, and if that works out through the contract, then that is a step forward. However, what we have to consider here in the city of Roanoke is first, the environmental impact between electric buses, propane buses, and diesel buses. We know that electric is the cleanest, that's the easiest. However, electric buses come with about double the price tag of a diesel bus, and so we've got to consider that and how we look at it. Fuel efficiency is another factor. Of course, electric's easy, however, imagine going to Richmond where we have to play most of our Class V regional football games and you have to charge a bus for about six hours to get 120 miles based on the current electric buses that are available. That may not be the most efficient way to get our kids to those programs. So we'd have to consider that. Infrastructure and charging and refueling considerations. When we, when we look at it, diesel's everywhere, normal gas stations, most school districts. Finding charging locations, we'd have to work on that and see how long it would take, as I just mentioned. And then propane ports, we'd have to make sure that if we consider that, we'd have to consider propane ports across the state. I talked about upfront costs, maintenance costs is another thing we have to consider, and of course, community perception. But considering all those things, we believe that we will keep in accordance with our strategic plan and the city's goal of becoming green and reducing our carbon footprint. And as you heard, our own fleet has already started that way. And also in your packets provided earlier, you have information on our solar array project through our power purchase agreements that's in your handout, and a little bit of an update on that electric fleet. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any other questions?
No, I'll just make a comment since I brought that forward. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Perkins, for that update. And I agree, it is very expensive. I think in the long run, it will be a good investment. I just want to thank you for keeping it in the forefront, right? I mean, because I stress it all the time with our city manager, it does take time. We're not going to, you know, convert overnight. So, you know, if you're looking at something happening maybe in 2027, I mean, I think that's amazing. That's like with warp speed, considering how long it takes for us to actually convert. But I would, I would try to stay away from diesel if at all possible. I think propane might be better, but I just think it's important for us to start thinking in that direction because we all know how important it is for us to become clean. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Better?
Just a quick question. I know as we've talked about electric buses for the city, which I think are a little different scale in some ways than school buses, but it's related to charging time. One of the things we've realized is it would take two EV buses to cover a full day for a current clean diesel bus. I don't know that that's going to be as much of a challenge with the timeframe, but have you all talked through that and what the, in relation to the charging capability?
Yes, sir, we have. And let me give you an example. We start our buses at 5:45 a.m. with our first pickup at 6:15. Our buses run consistently through about 7:30 every day. We have midday preschool runs, we have field trips, we have athletic events, we have extracurricular activities, our activities bus run, and for some sporting events, we're up till 10:00 at night, maybe later. So that is a huge consideration for us when we have to consider the charging time and how, and that's why we have to consider propane and other alternatives to be as clean as possible to keep with our strategic plan. So we've discussed that, and that's going to take a feasibility study. And just think of the terrain in our city, we have a mountain sitting in the middle of our city, as we all know. We've got to consider, you know, how much energy it's going to take for an electric bus to get up Garden City Boulevard, for example, and what will that do to the charge? We had a good report on when it comes to cold weather. The Carroll County School Division received some electric buses in a grant, and during the most recent cold snap, when it got into the single digits, those buses performed well. So that's good. I will add, we were waitlisted on one grant for 25 buses and we have applied for another. So we'll have to wait.
You missed that part, that's awesome. You missed that. Keep talking.
Look, we're on this, I can guarantee it, so.
Awesome. That's good.
Any other questions? Let's go to the next item, which is clarification on the protocol for threat of danger.
All right, thank you again. First, let me just say that, as you all know, and I know that you believe this as well, that there isn't anything more important than the safety of our students and staff members on a daily basis. Many of us are parents and many of us are also educators, and so we know that there isn't anything more important than the safety and security of our students and all of our staff members as well. So the clarification that you have in your packet is related to that which is aligned with the Code of Virginia, also aligned with the guidelines that we use for the incidence of threats. You have two flow charts. You have the black and white flow chart that tells us kind of, that has the protocol of what we do, and then you have a more colorful flow chart there that outlines how we communicate. And so those are the two ways, again, the systems and processes that we use to make sure that we are consistent in the way that we're handling matters, that we are keeping safety at the forefront of everything. I'll just take a minute to go through, again, not every single detail, but because I know that you've had these ahead of time, and certainly we're going to be here to answer any questions that you might have. But I'll start with the black and white chart that you have, and that is what we do. And again, this is adapted from the guidelines for responding to student threats of violence, and the Virginia Youth Violence Project. So when a threat is reported, the first thing that we do is we evaluate the threat. We make, we interview the students who made the threat, the recipient of the threat, and other witnesses, and steps, and then we also write down the exact kind of content due to the threat. Step two, we decide whether the threat is transient or substantive. If it is transient, then we respond to the transient threat, and then that could come in the form of reprimands, parent notification, other disciplinary action. And then if it's a substantive threat, and if it's a serious threat, a very serious threat, then a serious threat involves a threat to assault someone, and a very serious threat involves the use of a weapon. So we do handle that appropriate as well, appropriately as well. As you can see from the next steps after that, if it is a serious threat, we respond to that, we take immediate precautions to protect the victims, the potential victims, including notifying the intended victim and the victim's parents or guardians. We notify the student's parent or guardian, consider contacting law enforcement, referring the student to counseling, mediation, or other intervention, and then we discipline the student as appropriate. If it is a very serious threat, that's on the right-hand side of your chart, you'll see that we take immediate precautions by protecting the victim, of course, including notifying the intended victim and the victim's parent or guardians, notifying the student's parent or guardian, consulting with law enforcement, and beginning mental health assessment of the student. We discipline the student, and then we also implement a safety plan. We complete a written plan, maintain contact with the student, and revise the plan as needed. On the communication side, that's the more colorful document that you have, you'll see that these are the communication guidelines that we use. And the questions are those that are most important are those that are in black, and that is, is the situation active? Is it imminent? And then if it's yes, we of course contact law enforcement, and then we have appropriate first responders in our crisis plan, so we follow that crisis plan. If it is not active, if it is not imminent, then we gather the appropriate members of the threat assessment team. Let me just go over this, based on the Code of Virginia, what, who is composed of the threat assessment team? And this is the Code of Virginia 22.1-79.4 on threat assessment teams and oversight committees. This is item C. Each division superintendent shall establish for each school a threat assessment team that shall include persons with expertise in counseling, instruction, school administration, and law enforcement, and in the case of any school in which a school resource officer is employed, at least one such school resource officer. So those are the members of the threat assessment team. And so you can see then the breakout from there about if it's active or imminent, and then the next question is, is the incident or threat credible? And if it is credible, is it urgent again, or imminent? And if it is not, that's where we consult with the building administration. Is there widespread impact causing a substantial disruption? And then we have measures that go out from there. So if it is urgent or imminent, again, we contact those directly impacted by the threat. We contact the school board. You get information from us all the time, I'm sure, through our clerks, through, to the city council, we alert you. We also contact the bus, class, and/or school community as appropriate and notify of the potential incident, again, if it is urgent or imminent. And then if it is not credible, or urgent or imminent, again, if the seriousness of it, we notify those that you see there that are listed out, and then we handle the communication at the school level, including notification of the students and staff involved as appropriate. And then the last section there is their widespread impact due to the threat that is causing a substantial disruption to the educational environment, and you can see the steps that are taken there. So I know I've prolonged that item a bit, but I wanted to walk us through the steps of what we do and how we communicate and to whom we communicate, and hopefully these resources will be helpful as you're needing a reference for them. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
If I could add, as you, the question, just to, which I'm sure you already know, these processes and protocols are rooted in what we can and cannot do by state law. So there is, there is a legal compliance that our pressures in all directions on the protocols that you see. So I just would mention that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think what we've learned also through the public is that when there is a credible threat, and again, sometime, well, we act when it's urgent, when it's imminent. What the public has said to us also is that when it is not urgent or imminent, but it is credible, and even if it's old, they would still like to know. And so we do notify, and our parents can tell you that they get their calls all the time of notifications. But if we have an old threat, the one that is credible, we are trying to balance and weigh that, how can we still maintain our responsibility? How can we still follow the code and the law, but also be responsible in notifying our parents as well? So lessons learned over time, and so we are balancing and weighing how to do so responsibly.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. White. My question is really focused on the engagement with mental health specialists.
Sure.
And I know that you all have been actively working to hire more counselors at all the schools. Once you do that initial assessment, and I appreciate that you all make sure that s- students and parents and the school community know that mental health support is available, what does the follow-up look like beyond that initial assessment? And I say this not only for the student who may be the one committing the act of concern, but also for those students and families who are impacted by that. Because we all know that whether it's the trauma of an event or ongoing mental health support, it's the, it's the ongoing nature of it that's absolutely critical in addition to the immediate. So I just wanted to hear what, and I know it's, you don't have the end-all, be-all on this, but it'd be helpful to hear the process.
Sure. I think it's important for us to realize that every situation is different. Every situation involves students who have their own kind of unique needs and staff members who have unique needs as well. We take all of that into consideration. So not only do we have counseling support for our students, but we have employee support through our EAP program as well, so that we're not just leaving people kind of there and to deal with it on their own. That is a service that we offer to all of our employees in terms of EAP. But we also work with the principal to determine, again, we can't violate the law, we do have to maintain the code, we have to maintain the law, but we also work with the principal to determine how best to meet the needs of the students and staff that they serve on a daily basis, that all of us serve on a daily basis. So it is an individualized school plan, also individualized student plans that we put in place as well. If it is a safety issue, and then as you could see at the bottom of your flow chart, those students have an individualized safety plan. Again, and those plans will vary based on, based on the needs of the student, whether or not the student has special needs, or the child has a history, or if the child doesn't have a history. All of those things factor into this safety plan, not only for the student, but also for the school.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Dr. White, a couple of weeks ago, I was at PH, was having a student support meeting with a student. And one of the reasons that she gave for not coming to school is because she didn't feel safe at school because of shootings throughout the country. And I explained to her what actions the school takes, and within less than a minute, there was a lockdown drill. So the parents were, so I had explained to the parents what was going on, and they felt that the students stay at school with, now they had the information of what a lockdown drill was and what measure the school takes. So thank you.
Now, I want to thank you. I want to thank the council and our school board as well. Keep in mind that it was just two years ago that we did the 25 recommendation?
Yeah, that's right.
Two years. Yes, okay. The years are starting to blend together. But about two years ago, this was forward thinking on the part of our administration, the school board, city council, of how to keep our students safe, the number-one priority, right? Because if you can't, if you can't feel safe, then it's hard to learn, right? So all of those 25 improvements and enhancements that we made, again, we can't guarantee that nothing will ever happen. I would love to be able to stand here and say, I guarantee. But we can do everything that we can to keep our students safe. And that comes, and when we're talking about the budget and talking about those kinds of things, prioritizing safety the way that you've done, again, makes all the difference in the world. Go to Hurt Park right now. You'll see a new vestibule there, right? You'll see the whole new lobby there with the double lock-off system. That wasn't the case a couple of years ago. So examples like that of what you've done and what we've done collectively to make sure that we have the physical enhancements for our students and staff, but also the social-emotional supports, as you said, Councilman Cobb, Vice Mayor, about adding the counselors and adding the student support specialists. All of that works together to keep our students and staff safe. So I just want to take a moment to thank you for that support.
All right.
Sure.
I saw it throw to you. That would have been nice.
No, I just wanted to add to that, and thank you all, city council. But one of the visions too of Dr. White is not just being organized, but she always talks about organizational discipline. So doing what we say we're going to do, we're going to miss the mark sometimes, but we're not perfect. And there are some, there are some issues in the community that are unfortunately going to be a reactive state. So, but I think this is a good step in the right direction, making sure we have our plan in place and making sure there's open communication. So I just appreciate us being able to share this today. This is very important.
Any other questions on that issue?
If not, next item is academic update.
Okay, let's get to the good stuff. And while I'm introducing him, he could come on up. Mr. Freeman is our chief academic officer and will give us an overview of the academic update. But I am so proud of our team. Again, knowing our students by name, by strength, by need, this is how, and you heard a little bit earlier about the all-in tutoring plan and what we're doing. I have to say today, and hopefully I'm probably stealing Mr. Freeman's thunder, but I'm proud of the fact that as we stand here today, that all of our students remain accredited, and I'm proud of that fact. I'm proud of the fact that we are continuing to make progress. Again, we're not where we want to be, but we are certainly moving in the right direction. And I believe that that is due to the leadership teams that we have, as well as our teachers, who work so hard on a daily basis to know our kids by name and need. So, Mr. Freeman, I'll let you tell all the good stuff.
Thank you, Dr. White. Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, Chairwoman Dr. Jamison, school board members, city council members, and Dr. White. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning and giving you just a brief update on academics. As we work collaboratively with all of our principals, we are focusing on the whole child to ensure targeted instruction is taking place in the classroom. Some of the things that you have in your packet that I will mention, you've already heard a little bit about already, but Dr. White has already kicked us off with the good news and the best news, that all schools remain accredited. And we're so glad and so happy about that because of the hard work that is taking place in our classrooms. If you're looking at your packet of information that you have in front of you, we'll look at a little bit dealing with early literacy, overall academics with the all-in tutoring plan, as Vice Mayor Cobb has already mentioned earlier, the post-secondary success, and overall well-being and sense of belonging, of course, our social and emotional state of our students, as well as faculty, but most importantly, looking at our students too. In our early literacy, when we look at the information, the goal is to ensure that all students are reading at or above grade level by the end of third grade. And as you were seeing in your information, we did meet the mark because we've taken additional measures and making changes to the curriculum to be fully implemented in the 24-25 school year. I must applaud the pre-K department because they're working collaboratively with all stakeholders, and some individuals have gotten invited also to look at the curriculum, help pick out the curriculum. But also, they are doing different sessions on making sure they increase enrollment. For example, the Envision Center, they will be there on February the 6th from 3:30 to 6:30, if you want to mark that on your calendar, and show up there. They will be doing some enrollments for our pre-K program. So we are moving in the right direction, again, with the hopefully a fully implemented change in our curriculum for the 24-25 school year. And when you look at the area of academics, and you've already had that in your information too, we strive to provide high-quality, tier-one instruction to every student, and use evidence-based programs to accomplish this task. I know there was a question that's not on the list about phonemic awareness, just to let you know that Hagerty, really great reading, and Lexia Core 5 is addressing the phonemic awareness through intervention lessons, phonics lessons with letter knowledge and high-frequency words, with fluency vocabulary and comprehension. And if you're looking at your information on page two, on the pathway two of academics, you will see that's been provided to you that professional development for our teachers are taking place. And we want to make sure that the professional development that is taking place is benefiting our teachers for effective instruction. We've created an instructional framework in our schools. And for example, we have nine schools that are part of the E3 Plus, which is Empowering Educators to Excel. This framework sets a foundation for specific look-for's in the classroom, structured data meetings where we're truly targeting a focus on our students, as Dr. White has stated, and we state each and every one of our meetings by name and by need. And this allows us the opportunity to see where our teachers are with our students, know where our students are, what remediation they need, what remediation groups they need to be targeted and put into weekly. And we must thank our teachers because they're working hard, as of course, to address student learning loss, which leads into what we talked about just a little bit earlier by Vice Mayor Cobb, the all-in tutoring. Roanoke City Schools have been addressing student learning loss by providing tutoring, adjusting our schedules to meet the needs of students. And when I say adjusting our schedules, we have a few schedule, major schedule changes, even at the middle school level, that we're piloting this school year, and that's making adjustment to our hybrid schedule. We have to provide the number of hours and classes as course by state mandate for our students. So we have to make sure we have that core instruction. But we've adjusted the instruction to have more time in those classes so we can increase and see improvement in our achievement. We also utilize the 21st Century programs to be an extension of the day. And in this school year, the VDOE has already been stated, released the all-in tutoring playbook. And from that playbook, schools have developed tutoring plans for grades three through eight to address learning loss. Schools have created their own schedules to meet the needs of their students in their buildings, meaning, in your packet you have with you, you have an example of a Hurt Park Elementary School schedule. And I picked Hurt Park because Hurt Park has not only a before-school plan, it has a during-school plan, and it has an after-school plan through the 21st century, but also she's utilizing her Saturday sessions combination with books and breakfast. So when you look at your sheet before you, you will see how she's got it with targeted instruction being provided by the teachers and/or tutors for the students. And you will see that information, and that targeted instruction before school is from 7:00 to 7:30. So yes, students are in school early, ready to learn. Yes, there are individuals there ready to teach and instruct them, and we appreciate those individuals. And then if you see throughout the day, it varies by grade level, from 30 minutes to one hour, of how they will adjust their time to make sure they meet the needs of the students based off the reading and the math for small group. Then at the end of the day, that's the 21st Century program, you have an hour from three to four, three to five days a week. And then we have Saturday sessions from 10:00 to 11:00. They have books and breakfast, but all the other time, they're pulled for targeted remediation. That's just a sample of one of our schools. Her acronym is called WIN. We have another school that called it Rocket's Block. So it's different things they're doing to make sure the students are invited in and excited about being in their programs. So when you're looking at that information, yes, it was stated earlier that we have all-in tutoring money that is available. We utilize it not only to compensate our teachers during the day that would take up their time to do the all-in tutoring. They might be doing it during extension of the day after school, or they may be doing it during their planning. They're getting compensated. Licensed teachers are at $40 an hour, and nonlicensed teachers are at $35 an hour. And I need to stick a plug in for those that might be watching, for you all to get some assistance. We need some additional tutors. We now have, and actually, 56 hired tutors. That was the information Vice Mayor Cobb asked about. But that does not include the tutors that we utilize as our teachers that are already in the buildings. I can provide that information to the Dr. White and the school board at a later time to get it to the city council. But that was my plug. Anyone that would like to be a tutor, I would love for you to come and apply. Mr. McKee is here. Applications are available on our RCPS. And also, you mentioned, Vice Mayor Cobb, and someone asked a question about making sure we address the needs based off of staffing and numbers. I think it was Ms. Sanchez Jones. We are starting our staffing meetings February the 19th. It's very intense. It's in collaboration with Mr. McKee and his team. It will take place for about three weeks to a month, where we go and we visit principals at the schools and see what their needs are and address their needs. So we have to make sure we can address what is needed. To continue on for our post-secondary success, there's already been mentioned earlier, everybody's already excited about CTE and our advanced placement information, and of course, has been acknowledged about the Charge W. Day Technical Career and Technical Education Center. As you know, students started classes this past August at Lucy Addison Middle School in the old aerospace part in order to make sure that we had our students prepared to go into DAYTEC. We wanted to make sure they had the coursework. I am proud to announce, and everybody knows, we entered in DAYTEC on January the 22nd, and students were welcomed not only by their teachers and faculty, but members of the executive staff and by Dr. White. And it was exciting to see our students coming into the building. It is a must-see, and once a ribbon-cutting date has been set, you will receive the invite. This is an exciting time for our students, our communities, and our city. So we're very thankful to our school board and city council for supporting the vision and the visionary that Dr. White gave to us. And I would just tell you, and I know you've probably seen the video clip, I told them I walked in there and I said, yes, I may need a haircut. So I may be one of the customers in the barbering class. There are a lot of opportunities, and you have that list in front of you. For the sake of time, I would not read that entire list, but those programs are in action right now as we speak in DAYTEC. On our career and college readiness, as we've already discussed, our roadmap to student success includes increased focus on career and technical and college readiness. And you have this information in front of you, but I just want to highlight in the career readiness, the number of workplace readiness credentials earned increased by 42% in Roanoke City Public Schools. The state average saw a 7% decrease. So we're making progress. The total number of industry credentials earned by students increased with 10%. Roanoke City Schools, and the average of increase by the state was only 2%. The number of students earning one or more credentials increased by 12%. The state average was only 2%. And in our area of college readiness, the number of advanced placement course participants increased by 6%. The tests taken increased by 9%, but their partnership and dual enrollment with Virginia Western has increased by 26%. So we are grateful for all of our community, individuals, and our stakeholders that work with us in exciting times to make sure we provide these opportunities for our students. Our graduation rate does remain in the high 80s, and I want to briefly just speak about Hazel Health. That's the last component. The Hazel Health started on November the 6th, 2023. I'm sure everyone has seen it as a way that we'd be able to get our students to be heard, seen, and cared for. When we started on November the 6th, it was Mental Health Services. The physical health part started second semester, January the 22nd, and we're excited about that. To date, we have had over 100 referrals through 14 elementary schools and nine secondary, and I include the programs, schools in the secondary numbers. 137 sessions have been conducted. The service, again, is at no cost to the families, so we can get that out there to our students and get that out there to our community. But they must fill out a consent form. So we're grateful for all of these opportunities. That's all I have for you today. I know I talked fast.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have, thank you, Mr. Freeman. And I'm glad you said that. There would be an official ribbon-cutting for DAYTEC because I called Mayor, I said, we didn't get to come. What's going on here? We're all excited. So I'm glad.
We haven't gone yet either.
Yeah, I know. I thought, what is happening here? So I'm glad we got that straight. But I was just wondering, Mr. Freeman, can you, do we know what the state average graduation rate is for the state? Do we know what that average is? So we have an idea of a comparison?
I do not have that information in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Oh, I was just curious. I couldn't find it on Google. You know, Mr. Google knows everything. He didn't know that.
He couldn't answer.
Uh-uh, he didn't know. But that's okay. You can, you can.
I will get it to you.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, so, you know, it gives us an idea where we are.
Yes, ma'am.
May I add?
Sure.
In asking for information on data, I would be interested in knowing if you don't, you can supply it. Out of the percentage of students that do go through the CCAP, how many actually graduate? I understand that pre-COVID, there was like a 40%. So I knew the rate was very low as to how many goes in and how many graduated, it was like a 40%. And so I'd be interested to know now, post-COVID, as to, as those numbers come back up, are they lower?
Okay, so let me make sure I got that. So in speaking with Virginia Western, make sure you would like to know the actual graduation rate of those that are in CCAP?
Yes, the CCAP that comes through from the city that goes into the program. And then go on to maybe to a four-year college or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was just going to say, if you could email those to the clerk, she'll send it to all of us, so we can all get it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, yes, ma'am. Anybody, Mrs. Pell?
I also wanted to note, I recognize it from here, but you all might not be aware that I'm pretty sure these are screenshots from our that I'm pretty sure these are screenshots from our dashboard for our strategic plan. So this information here is not hidden data. You can go through it, you can link through it through our updated website, and you can go through and explore the data that is updated annually and how we're doing and meeting our strategic plan, which does include some of these data points regarding graduation, literacy, AP classes, things like that. I also wanted to note, one of the great things about, I know it's noted in here, with realizing DAY Tech being open, that there is a huge benefit to our students that achieve within their CTE classes and graduation rates. It's very high, and I didn't want to say it off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure, I mean, it's above the ninety.
It is above ninety.
Like, I want, ninety-eight percent is what I recall, but, so adding those CTE offerings actually will translate into further success for our students, both with careers and graduation. And the last thing I wanted to note, for a question for Ms. Poland, because I know she's, I don't recall that she was here, in a conversation with Ms. Sanchez Jones, we had talked about Hazel Health and the benefits of that, but there were questions about translation services, and I'm pretty sure, I was trying to find it in my notes, that there are translation services for the virtual offerings, but I don't know about the in-person, so.
There are translation services, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I saw a few of you Saturday at the Roanoke Valley Governor's School Project Forum, which was packed, it always is, and I'm always baffled when I look at the boards and the projects that they've created, and I have no idea how they do any of it. But we have some remarkable students, and I give that shout-out because we have Roanoke City Public School students from PH and Fleming that are a part of that. So the other question I had was in relation to the program studies from Virtual Virginia. And I'm curious how those are evaluated and reviewed for students who want to expand their electives, particularly related to language learning. I know we have a lot of students who are very good language learners, like multiple languages, and to the degree that it seems like they reach a certain point in a particular language, and then they, my understanding is that if that language expansion is not available in the program studies, that they can't take it as an elective. So I'm curious how that's reviewed and evaluated, and if there's room for expansion on particular languages.
So we do have some students that are actually taking advanced courses through Virtual Virginia for the language. I would be curious to know exactly what level, because we can work through that. We have partnership with Virginia, Virtual Virginia, in order to assist our students. So if you could have the individual refer to me, and I can give you some more information in the process.
I'll follow up with you on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up, Mr. Freeman, someone sent me some information saying the state average graduation rate is ninety-two percent. Does that sound right? So you would, are we slightly below the state average?
Yes, we are slightly below the state average. Ninety-two percent sounds about right, maybe ninety-one, but I just want to double check.
Yeah, double check for me, please.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
All right, any more questions on that?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the next items pretty much deal with Project Discovery Program. Well, I can give you all this, and the status of the former school administration building.
I was gonna ask Mr. Freeman not to go too far, because he's going to take Project Discovery as well, and for an apples-to-apples comparison for the graduation rate, we'll pull that to make sure that we have that clear, and we'll also pull the average graduation rate for urban school divisions.
That all makes a difference, Dr. White, thank you.
I know the question came about Project Discovery being in schools, and I had a conversation with Ms. Moon Reynolds on Friday. I just wanted to make sure that we were known that Project Discovery is in some of our schools. We still got to work collaboratively in addressing some of the additional schools. Noel C. Taylor Learning Academy, right now, and William Fleming High School have the contents of the Project Discovery Program. Of course, we know Project Discovery is also a first-generation college bound student through information and activities, and we also have some different things going on with our Avid program there, too. So we do want to make sure that we work in collaboration together, that we provide, because we do believe in college readiness for our students. I know that Ms. Moon Reynolds had a specific question in regards to middle schools. With the schedule changes that we had in our middle schools, we're going to have to sit down and collaborate this summer, how we can utilize and bring Project Discovery back. So thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds, for making sure you had that conversation with me. We do, we are advocates for college readiness, as I've already presented earlier, and we do have the programs like Avid and Project Discovery. Some schools make impact for our students, but we do want to expand. So we ought to continue to collaborate and see what we can provide, but we must make sure also that we're completing our mandates the state requires us to complete. So we may have to look, thinking outside the box, which means we may have to think outside the box of somebody after school with that 21st Century program, how we can build in with the middle school piece, but we just need to have more of a conversation.
And I did have an opportunity to have the clerk make copies, and I've shared that with the council, as well as with the school board and the administration, on our information sheet, what Project Discovery is and what it will provide. And what we really want to look at is starting with the sixth graders in the middle schools, if possible, and then we can work with them all the way up to twelfth grade versus trying to work with them from nine to twelve, but to provide that resource, especially for the parents of those who don't know what it takes to get a child prepared for college, or even if they're not college, what they may want to go into, even in a trade, but to be with that child throughout. So a collaboration would be very supportive if we could get that, because I also serve on the State Board for Project Discovery, and that's where we look at the state of Virginia. And I look down at southwest Virginia, and our numbers are low. And we have a scorecard that each coordinator has to submit, whether they are, and we rate them on it. So I just want to make sure that I do my part on the local board, as well on the State Board, to ensure that Roanoke is well-represented when it comes to our kids.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions on that? We're gonna move a little quickly here with regards to the other items. School administration building, I missed that, or did anybody?
That's the next one on my list, is a roll. So as Mrs. Sandrich comes up, our chief communications officer and community engagement officer as well, as she comes forward, I just want to say how grateful we are for your support of the entire Equity in Action Plan. It is action indeed. As you can see through DAY Tech, I always say it's happening. It's, and with regard to DAY Tech, it has happened. And so we're really appreciative of your support of doubling our CTEC capacity in that way. We'll be able to streamline our offices as well, but when it comes to the Community Empowerment and Education Center, I think that this is going to be a huge benefit for our community. And so I'm going to let Mrs. Sandrich talk about where we are right now in the process. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Lee, members of council, Madam Chair, and members of school board. Thank you. As Dr. White said, we are so excited about the Community Empowerment and Education Center, and Mayor Lee, I'll try and keep it brief. So in your packet, you have the Community Needs Assessment. Dr. White established the Community Engagement Committee to begin looking at the, and researching for the development of the center. We knew what we said during the pandemic, what we would offer in the center, but we also needed to make sure that post-pandemic, what the community needs is what we're still doing, and what we are seeing is strong alignment with what we said we were going to do and what the community wants. So I encourage you to go through this and look at the full needs assessment. This was presented to our school board in May of 2023, so anybody watching can also get it on board docs. Some of the things that we're going to be offering in the center include a welcome center. This is going to allow our students who are enrolling in Roanoke City Public Schools an easy place to go and get help with that enrollment process. This is especially important for our students who may not be native English speakers. And there are going to be translation services there, offer required testing for new students, as well as access to immunizations that are required for going into the school system. It's also going to bring together community partners to provide access to needed resources that the community has indicated in the survey. And so rising to the top, you're going to see counseling and mental health support, adult education, and adult English classes for non-native speakers. I do want to stress that we're not seeking to duplicate services offered in the community. We're looking for ways that we can make them more accessible for our families, because we know if we wrap our arms around our families, we inherently strengthen our students and give them the opportunity for a brighter future. So the committee has begun working with community partners, and they include the Roanoke City Allegheny Health Districts. We just met with Goodwill last week and many others, and we're looking for synergy between the offerings that they have with their organizations and what is needed in the center. So that is ongoing, and we're also actively fundraising for the center as well. So central office will not completely move out of the building until the, until early 2025, and so we're looking to establish the center officially in the summer of 2025. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think she's, she pretty much covered it, I don't have any additional. Just like to continue to receive updates and let the public be aware of what's going on. That's where most of the questions have come from, is in that community, what's going on at the former school administration building?
Yeah, we're excited and we're glad the community is excited as well. It's gonna be a great resource.
All right, thank you. There will have to be some remodeling and renovation of the building to make it proper and appropriate for, open to the community that way, so.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. White, the issues are the update on school construction and where they are, which we've had some of that, but view is live.
Absolutely. Mr. Perkins will come forward to give us that update on school construction projects, and while he's up, I'll also ask him to cover the use of school facilities to take us through our agenda. Mr. Perkins?
Good morning again. So let me start with Preston Park Elementary. We have named a design firm, which is RRM, which is a local architects and engineering firm here on Church Street. Matter of fact, it's a couple blocks from City Hall. We went with a construction manager at risk process for this bill, so we can get a guaranteed maximum price. It's a local contractor, G&amp;H General Contractor has been awarded that. We hope to start construction in summer of 2024. Architectural work and zoning work's being done on that as we speak. We have a completion date of summer of 2026. The total budget, soft and hard costs for this project is estimated at forty-four-point-three million dollars. Moving to Lucy Addison Middle School, we repurposed this location. As you know, we had a slight delay of approximately four months in our Charles E. Day Technical Education Center, and so in order to keep the students on pace with their curriculum and studies, we repurposed the old fieldhouse when it was a high school. We created offices and classrooms there. That space now, because of some of the renovation we're doing at the building here downtown behind City Hall, is being used for flex space for our offices. We'll move out completely, and Dr. Rolster, the principal at Lucy Addison, will receive all of that remodeled space. He intends to use it partially for social-emotional learning and some other ideas that he has to benefit Lucy Addison Middle School. The last question about the school projects from you is the Charles W. Day Technical Education Center. So let me say tentatively, put on your calendars, April the twelfth at four P.M. is the ribbon cutting, or, excuse me, ribbon-cutting for this facility. Now, there's a couple of reasons why we wanted to wait, and so let me explain that. We took a twenty-six-month project, and we pulled it off in sixteen months, and that's amazing, but we needed the labs for those students to get in so they could do their work in the professional, or in the pathways that they have chosen. So that's why that delay occurred, and that's why we've still got some things we need to do. We made sure the classrooms were appropriate for the students, but we just want to make sure it's properly named and recognition goes into that building, so we have the ribbon-cutting. The all-in cost for that project right now is at twenty-four-point-five million dollars, substantial investment for the benefit of our students going forward for career and technical education. I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions for the construction update.
Oh, Mr. Wilson?
I just want to add something to your construction update. Just wondering how things are going with the former Roanoke Times building and when the administration will be moving in there.
Absolutely. So we again went with a construction manager at risk process for that, so we can get a guaranteed maximum price for that. Our contractor is local, is Branch, and our architect is RRM on that project. Currently, we have to phase that project, so it's a very complex project, because we have people that are actually in the building, because as you remember, we had to remove people from our operations center so we could have the Charles E. Day Technical Education Center. And so we are moving people around, as you heard, some are moving into Lucy Addison temporarily. Right now, we'll, in phase one of our move-in, where they're in their official permanent locations, the first floor, which is Human Resources, will be in there in May of 2024, coming up. The second phase, July, will, our third floor, will move our academic team in and our professional learning team. And then we've got to move everybody out again and move them around a little bit more, because then we have to finish the mezzanine and second floor of that building, and that will be finished in July of 2025. So then we'll be, we'll have all of the staff moved into their permanent locations at that time.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Perkins. Yeah, well, the next item is youth athletics or usage of the school facility in the youth recreation program.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'll cover that also. In your packet, you have the gym rules and, or use rules and policies. I think it's important to note that right now, we have a great working relationship with Patrick Boas and Milton Hardy when it comes to Parks and Rec. However, there are some difficulties in dealing with the system that is in place. Right now, Roanoke City Public Schools uses its custodial staff to help manage access and supervision. After hours there, we're responsible for all the cleaning and damages that occur. Year-to-date, in the basketball program, and that year started December fourth, we've documented as of this morning over sixty-three concerns and issues related to this relationship we have. Our concern is for the, your assets of Roanoke City, as the council, you own the assets, we manage them, and we want to make sure that we're doing that with all due diligence. We've worked very diligently with the athletic programs, which are volunteer-based, we have four. We've had formal meetings, emails, telephone, conversations in person involving Parks and Rec staff and everyone. We know there's a long way to go, but I will, I will say this, we wanted to cut out some of the communication when it comes to scheduling. So on July, or January twenty-fifth, we attempted to work directly with that. Our facility employees spent almost six hours dealing with scheduling issues, which it cannot be sustained. You know, our operations staff, our custodial staff, and our maintenance staff is understaffed as well as your Parks and Rec staff. So what's going to take is more work in this process to resolve the issues, but I believe that we can do that. We've got good staff on both sides of the school division and the city and the Parks and Rec Department, and I think we can find a resolution, but it is going to take time. It is a product of, you know, years of how, you know, we got here because of years of change that has taken place. But we have rules that we have to be considerate of, and our principals, they have to come in in the morning, and our PE teachers have to go to the gyms and expect the gyms to be ready for our students to go forward, and sometimes that's not happening. And, and we have our own issues, too. So let me say, you know, we've, six times, we've been late opening the schools, and one time, we didn't even show up on a Saturday morning. So we accept that. However, you know, we, we have to work forward with a better plan, and so I think we need a total assessment of the winter sports, particularly because of the use of the inside of the facilities, to consider safety and security, consider access, consider all the things that are important to all of us in the room. And I will stop there and field any questions you may have.
All right, thank, all right, Ms. Moon.
Thank you for that, and I have. Thank you for that, and I have to agree with you, and I'll go one step further. There's enough blame to go around, not only just the schools, but the cities, but the coaches and the parents, mainly the parents. I have to be honest, I dealt with parents for 20 years, and beyond that, when I was coached for 15. So I do know that we have to hold those parents accountable when it comes to the kids, especially during their practices, using the facilities, and bringing in drinks, so, I mean, you know, candy, whatever food, and then walking out as if it's not their problem. And at one point, as coach, I had got to the point where I didn't allow the parents to come in because I didn't want to have to clean up behind them. And it was drop your child off at the door, come back and pick them up. And for my, for my kids, and I coached two teams, that worked. I can't say that works for others, but I will say that something has to be done because it is very frustrating for the coaches, for the schools, and for the city. However, on the city's side, this blame belongs to them is when, when I'm told that they pay, that the city pays for, through the registration, pays for officials, pays for other things, and when the parents and the coaches get to games, sometimes you don't have officials there. And that's a hindrance for the schools, I mean, for the teams. And then, in some instances, you don't have scorekeepers or bookkeepers, so you don't have anyone ready to keep the score, but you got the referees there, but you don't have scorekeepers or bookkeepers. And then you find assistant coaches being the scorekeeper and the bookkeeper, and, and they don't get paid whereby the city's paying for these services to be rendered to the, to the teams. So again, those are issues that I think needs to be worked out to ensure that when the teams come to play, that all parts are being met, and especially like you said, even on practices, that the doors are open, but at the same time that the, the room is clean when they leave. So again, there's some issues that we do need to address, but it's a shame, after two to three decades, we're still coming back around to these same issues. Thank you.
Well, well, let me just piggyback on something and say it real quickly. Thank you, Chris, in terms of your work and, and the school system with recreational facilities and what have you. And let me say, because I'm always sometimes in a gym or the football stadium, and we've got to do our part. I hope my colleagues know, you, we go over there, and let's be candid, just make a mess, and leave it in a mess, and it's an issue, but that's something we and our Recreation Department have to work on regarding our coaches and, in some cases, parents and all of those kinds of things in terms of coordinating practice schedules and that. But thank you all for your, for your work on that. Ms. Pell.
I did want to say, as a coach and a parent, and I ran into Ms. Moon Reynolds after our, my daughter's game the other week, that I know that the, everybody involved, those three partners you talked about, the parents, which is all those volunteer coaches, the city, and the schools are all invested in making it work, and I feel very confident with the people that I know involved, at least with the rec, you know, I'm only involved directly with the Rec Association as a volunteer coach from one part of the city, but also the schools and Parks and Rec, that I feel confident that the people involved can figure out how to make it work. I do have a question. Do you know how many of our school facilities are used for basketball during the season?
I have that, but I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, because I think it's the majority of the gyms, and it's like almost every night of the week, so.
Well, and I'll give you an example of how, anywhere we have a gym at the elementary level, because remember, we're in competition with middle school athletics and high school athletics. So anywhere that we have a gym, that gym is being used. And it, so far as with the MOU between Parks and Rec and the city, they are consulting on the gym that we're putting at Preston Park because that could be a huge addition to what we're doing as well. So, yeah, it's, most of the gyms that are available, but I'll have to get a exact number on that.
Thank you. Let me close by a sec.
I have some comments.
Oh, we gotta move now, okay.
I have, I have some comments on this and I have some closing comments too, but I don't want to interrupt.
Well, I got some closing comments, so we both, all right, go ahead, take your two minutes.
Just as a, a last thought on, on recreation, thankful for all the work that the schools are doing, that the city is doing. I think it just goes back to focus on what's even part of our budget discussions, it's just the need for staff in order, Ms. Appel said that, you know, the things, we can figure this out, but I know it's gonna take maybe more people in order for this to happen. We have a lot of seasonal positions that potentially moving to a full-time as we're building all these rec centers will be helpful towards this process. And I hope I'm not stepping on your toes with this, so please interrupt me if I am. I just want to make sure that, express thanks to Ms. Gasola and Mr. Kathy for their service on this board. I know that this is truly an act of public service. I think about how much homework I had to do for this and how much reading you all must get on a daily basis. It takes time away from your professional life and your personal life, and I think it's hard up here, I think it's probably harder down there, so I don't envy it, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have one, one more question, and this is for Dr. Jamison. I just wanted to, to ask if you all have always had your email and phone numbers removed from the website, or is that something recent? Because I got a call from a parent saying they've not been able to get in touch with you guys, and I went to look, and there, there's no email addresses and no phone numbers, and everyone up here, we all have our email addresses and our phone numbers on the website. And I just think that, you know, we are public servants, and I think that, that we should be accessible. I know it's, it's, you know, sometimes a challenge, but every one of us have our cellphone numbers on the website and our email addresses, so I, I thought maybe that would be something you all would consider.
Yeah, maybe with the new website, perhaps they've gone. That hasn't always been the case.
Okay, because I was going to say that, well, my former life, that was, that was done even with all council-appointed bodies.
Right.
Whether it was through the city's email system, everyone was assigned.
Yes.
An email, and I knew with RCPS that you all were assigned email addresses as well, and, and also a number that parents could contact you, whether it was your personal or another number, yes, whatever, but you had a number.
Yeah, that may be just a, that may have been a, a technology transfer change. That's not how it, that's, that's new. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we do all have RCPS email addresses, and we have all phone numbers, so that's probably just something to listen to.
Well, I can say, they get mine, and I don't publish it.
I was gonna say, I get phone calls, so someone's finding it, and I get emails.
Oh, well, Dr. White.
I just want to say to Mayor Lee, Chairwoman Jamison, as well as to the City Council and to the School Board, again, I'll end the way that I started, and that is a thank you, a place of gratitude. Thank you for your continued support of public education. I wouldn't be standing here if it were not for public education, and so I just want to thank you for your support, your governance, and your advocacy. And thank you to our team as well for always doing their due diligence to make sure that our, our students learn as much as they can and that they are properly taken care of. So thank you so much for this time.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank especially you and Chris Perkins. I keep calling him Captain, I'm trying to say Chris Perkins, but thank you for your work, and, and you all will be hearing more about this on the fentanyl issue. We're fighting fentanyl. Roanoke has been chosen as a pilot, and I think, we met last week with First Lady Yonkin and the Attorney General, and Secretary Littrell came down, and we had a, a room of about forty, fifty, sixty people. And the focus is educating our community on fentanyl because it's a killer. Children are dying, and it doesn't make any difference what your stature is, what side of town you're on, or, or, or any of that. People are dying, young people are dying with fentanyl. Even adults are doing that too. But it's a big education piece, and that's one of the things I noticed in our closing meeting last week, with education. We need educators, and I appreciate you all being, being involved in that. I think you have some great ideas. I was gonna say something about some issues that you mentioned at our meeting back there, but I said, hold up on that, I'll let you, because sometimes you put out things out there, questions come back. So I was gonna hold off on that if you and Chris were there, but thank you all for the collaboration and the work that's gonna be done, because that's a serious issue out there. We got people that's dying, young people, young people, and a lot of it is because they don't understand the ramifications, and they're not educated about it, and not only children, adults are not educated. People don't know how it happens, how it gets there, so, but thank you all for your work, and you'll be, we're, we're gonna do it again, but thank you for your commitment, collaboration, and cooperation in making that happen.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna turn the, the meeting over to Dr. Jamison to any comments she may have, or then she can adjourn.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm just gonna join the chorus of thanks as we close out, so thank you all. First, of course, thank you to the team and our leadership for being here. This makes, actually, with Mr. Pretty's kind thoughts in mind, but they make our jobs much easier and informed, so we really appreciate that. But also thank you to all of you for taking the time. I know you have very long days when you meet, but we appreciate the open communication and the ongoing conversations we're having here, and also through the buddy system, so we look forward to ongoing conversations, because it's nice to be a part of a system that cares this much about the future of our city, and for us, to the children, and certainly for you all with everything else. So with that, I, I'd also like to provide, Ms. Saunders and Ms. Watkins both asked me to share their regrets for not being here. They both had either professional or, or significant personal reasons they couldn't be here today. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Well, will you adjourn the board?
Yes, with that, I'd like to adjourn the School Board meeting.
All right, and the council will be in recess for about 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.[1263.83] All right, we will reconvene our council session, and I want to start by saying I have a communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convenes in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And all of you have a list of the current vacancies which are included in the agenda for this meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. There's communication from council member Patricia Whiteboard, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter, being the annual performances of the council-appointed officers pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. There's a communication from our city attorney, Mr. Spencer, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss specific legal matters involving the city and the Hotel Roanoke and Conference Center, requiring the provision of legal advice by such council pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. We have a communication from our city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding actual litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. Need a motion.
So moved.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And mayor Lee.
Aye. Did Ms. Sanchez don't vote, or is that me? I can't hear.
They're quiet.
Oh, quiet, okay. All right, I didn't listen on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring any further discussion or clarification.
Mayor Lee.
Yes, sure.
Now, I just ask, making sure this isn't in a morning briefing, I know we're going to discuss the photo speed cameras session. I didn't know if there were formal presentation or a contract, but whatever we could get, maybe more on paper-wise on that. I know we're going to go over top-line information this afternoon.
And that really is all it's going to be, and then if there's interest in proceeding, then we'll have additional briefings that will actually have more detail associated with the specifics of what whatever it might be, because we're not, we won't be talking about entering into any contracts or any of those kinds of things. It's just a really high-level overview at this point.
Okay. I'll just have questions. Be prepared to take notes.
Sure.
All right. And no topics for discussion, but a mayor member of the council, we've covered that. All right, we're ready to go, and I'm pleased to recognize the attorney, Mr. Tim Spencer, who will give us the briefings this morning.
Good morning, mayor, members of council. What we have up here, and we're going to have a little bit of an unusual process. We're going to have a discussion, presentation for potential amendments to our city code. And what I want to make clear, and say very clearly, we do not believe that these amendments are necessary in order to make our current ordinance comply with the law. We believe that we could legally defend the ability of the city to prohibit firearms in public street, road, alley, or sidewalk, or public right-of-way, any place, wherever, of whatever nature, adjacent to a permitted event, or an event that would otherwise require permit. Also, as, so, we're only asking that this be removed for more logistical reasons. And let me give a just real brief history, if I can, or a high-level overview of the difference between county streets and city streets. So counties, such as Fairfax County and Roanoke County, they do not own their streets. Therefore, if there's to be a 5K race, or a parade, or some kind of march, or even a neighborhood block party, VDOT would approve in the county that event, and therefore, under the enabling statute in Virginia, that would not trigger this. The city of Roanoke, we own our streets. And in the summer, in warmer weather, there are five to six, just 5K races every week. We simply don't have the resources to post the necessary signage. So this is more of a matter of, currently, we just aren't able to put up the signage necessary to enforce this. So I'm asking, just from a practical standpoint, that we amend our ordinance to remove it. Now, the draft that went out on the agenda, there is one little tweak that you will see that I'll hand out in the afternoon, and that is, and it's very minor, the use, the word "facility" is changed. I've gone back and looked at the enabling statute, and the enabling statute uses facilities, so we'd like to keep that same language that's in the enabling statute. The other things that we've done to kind of clarify is make sure that, for the housing authority, that we further make it clear that it's the business offices. It's not the whole, in other words, Lansdowne Park, it's only the management office. And then for the central office, and the envisioned center is their business office, where the prohibition of firearms is to be enforced, and signage is there. The other thing that we've done is we just added and made clear, and this is straight out of the enabling statute, that restrictions of this code section shall apply only to the parts of the buildings described therein that are being used for a governmental purpose, and only when such building or part thereof is being used for a governmental purpose. That's right within the state statute of code section 15.2-dash-915. We're just trying to make our ordinance and our code section mirror the enabling statute as much as possible. So, again, we do believe that our current ordinance complies with the law, state constitution and the Constitution of the United States of America. We're simply doing a little bit of housekeeping based on pure logistics of what we're able to do, given the resources we have in the city. Willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Thank you. My question is, you still have the parks still listed in there, as well as, does that still cover greenways?
Yes. Greenways are a linear park, and in looking at this, we've uncovered, now, I don't want to go into legal matters, because that'll be for closed session, dealing with legal strategies. But I can only say, and as I stated very briefly, there are a number of, there's been a history in the United States of public parks and a restriction of firearms in those public parks. There's been a broad history, and we believe that that does comply with the United States Supreme Court's decision in the Bruin case from 2022. And that's generally, I can go into more detail again, I don't want to give away any legal strategies that that case, we'll discuss that in a closed session.
Yeah, because I still have some reservations when it comes to parks and greenways, when we look at resources, having had some incidents, as you can, some you may can't discuss.
Right.
Having those incidents happen, and those persons, individuals, are not being able to protect themselves, and you don't have police officers in some of those isolated places on those greenways. I know one instance happened to me, when we were building, finishing out the greenway up at Bridge Street, and I was over at Memorial, off Memorial Bridge down at the Richland-Wayland entrance going on to the park, I mean, on the greenway. And there was someone that came up from the river, and I was out there by myself, and I ended up turning around and going back, because it was isolated. And if I was one, there was one that carried, I would have probably felt a little bit safer, because I could have protected myself. I would have felt more protected, let me put it that way. But I also read where you had some instances where you were listing out parks in other states, that they prohibited firearms to be carried. And to me, those were, those were just regular, some of the big parks, like Central Park in New York, and there was, I think you mentioned one in Chicago. I have no issues with the prohibiting guns in, like at Elmwood Park, or at the parks that's in the code, that we had put in a few years back, I think it was 2014, I believe, when we were allowing alcohol to be served in certain parks. I think prohibiting guns in those instances, I could, I could support, but I just don't see how we can enforce protecting our citizens on the greenways, linear parks, as you would call it, or in certain parks that are isolated.
Now, that would be a policy choice that you're stating, but from a legal perspective, I believe the law, the Constitution of Virginia, and the Constitution of the United States clearly supports the ability of this council, through the enabling statute atop it by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, to impose those restrictions on our parks. And in fact, those restrictions have been in place since council adopted this ordinance.
Right, I know, and I voted no at that time.
Yes.
So yes. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. First, where you mentioned facility, where exactly is that in here that you're saying the change was?
It's in new, I believe, F, down the bottom, down new paragraph F, notice of the restrictions imposed by, I did change it to code section. And then down the bottom, second to the last sentence, community center facilities. I had looked to change it to facility, I moved it back to facilities, just to mirror the enabling statute as much as possible.
I want to make sure, yeah, currently, we have facilities, so I think it's.
Currently have facilities.
That's what's making sure I didn't miss a change.
And I have a draft that'll be handed out this afternoon, if council wishes, to move this forward for adoption this afternoon.
I think that's the version I have, but, um, thank you.
Okay, so that is the version you have.
Um, the second one, just on the logistical point that you made earlier regarding streets, if this council so decided at some point in the future, if we did gain capacity, we could revisit, potentially, re-enacting the portion that we're looking at removing today, if we ever do end up getting the resource to do so. But today, because of where we stand, that that's why we're making this decision.
Yes, it's purely on resources, resources, I believe legally, and I believe that Fairfax County prevailed on that issue as well, and come what.
Just wanted to make that clear for the public. Thank you.
No, I just have some follow-up questions, but go ahead. No, I.
You want to follow what?
I just have another question to ask him, but I can wait.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My question is, since we have passed this measure for city facilities, for security measures, when will we be looking at the municipal building, that may be a bomb question, as to securing the municipal building to prevent people from coming in with firearms? I know we have the signage, but there's nothing there to prohibit anyone from coming in here with a firearm. I know we have security who sits at the doors, but the rest of the building is still open. So that's been, how long, since we've adopted that measure, to say, when will that, those things be put in place, even in the red cells?
It currently prohibits that. It's against the law to carry your firearm into the municipal building. Signage has been up at every entrance.
Right.
And it is prepared to be enforced.
But when will we be putting in any additional security measures, such as what was intended to be placed?
No, ma'am. It only requires the signage.
Okay, that's all I need.
So from a legal standpoint.
I understand the legal side, I understand that.
Now, there is additional security being put in place.
Yes, for security.
But that's separate and apart from the enforcement of this ordinance.
I understand that, but at the time when this measure was brought, that was part of what it was looking at, was it even mentioned that in the courthouse, you have security measures in place with the, with the scanning and coming through, and they were looking at, how do you prevent people from coming into secure buildings on the city side? So I'm just asking the question.
Currently, under the state enabling statute, and under, we have properly posted signage for the municipal building.
I understand that.
But there is additional security measures that are being put in place, and I don't know if he wants to go into detail of what they are, but I do know that they're in place and currently being constructed.
Yeah, and I would not want. That's the question, thank you.
Yeah, and I would not want to discuss the security upgrades that we have.
Okay.
were putting in place publicly.
That's fine.
Privately, we certainly can in a closed session.
No problem.
I will say, though, that the council has never approved funding for the equivalent in this building, as is over at the courthouse. That was never a part of the discussion associated with this. What was discussed was having security personnel, which we have in place, and then other items that I could certainly update you on in closed sessions.
No problem.
Goodbye, Mayor.
Thanks. Tim, thank you for this overview, and I am grateful that our current ordinances comply with the law. I think that's important to know.
Yes.
And though I'm, I will confess my disappointment that we have to make these amendments, but I appreciate why we're making them, and appreciate your, your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, at this time, I want to call on the city manager to introduce the next briefing.
We're going to take just a second here to load up the second part of this, so we don't have to interrupt when we transition. But I will go ahead and get us started. So, Mayor and council, thank you. As you know, this is budget season. This is our second briefing, budget briefing course. Last month, as is always the case, we start our budget briefings with the, the presentation from real estate assessment, and that was shared with you all at that meeting. And as is also customary, we follow that up with our second budget briefing focusing on, on CIP. And I think as we go through this, you'll somewhat understand why we start that early. And of course, work leading up to this has been going on for, for months, and will continue to go on, you'll see, as in the next steps with it. So what we will be ultimately walking you through is a reminder of the current revenue projections and priority expenditures, a review of how and why we do capital planning and programming, and a reminder of the current funded FY24 capital projects, as well as the current five-year CIP, and noting in particular where those, where items are changing in that, in that CIP. As you all know, we, we do our capital programming in a five-year window, so we look forward from the current year, four more years, so there's a total of five years. But the only capital that actually gets approved in the budget is that current year. And, but again, so there's always adjustments as we move forward, although those adjustments we try to keep to a minimum because of the financial programming that goes on with that. Then there'll be a brief overview of some of the higher level or more significant capital projects that are underway right now in the currently approved budget in the FY24. Then we will discuss with you the preliminary FY25 through 29, so that's kind of the next five years. Again, with FY25 ultimately being the item that we will at the, at budget approval time be asking for approval on, 29 being really the list of new items that you've maybe not seen, at least not programmed before, they've just been on the list of capital needs. Even though the five-year capital program that we show will have well over $200 million worth of capital expenditures proposed, there is a, an existing and growing list of capital needs that are not yet met, and you'll, we'll cover those, but we'll only cover those at a very, very high level because there are so many of them, we won't want to go into any extensive detail associated with those. And then we'll actually break from our, our presentation and actually shift over to the presentation from Davenport, from our financial advisors, where they will discuss two things. They'll discuss ultimately how we can be able to issue debt, which is a part of our capital program, to be able to fund the full five-year program based on what's been proposed, and more significantly, how we intend on funding the upcoming, the FY25 projects that are identified on that list. So you'll hear from them on that as well, and then we'll come back at the very end, answer any questions that might be asked, as well as talk about next steps as we work our way through this. At your place, you have a copy of the presentation, which is not any different than what was emailed to you. You also have a large, because when we get into these slides, you'll need the large printout of what the CIP actually includes for those, those years that are outlined, so you'll have that. And then Davenport actually has a hard copy of what was emailed to you also, that, that they will hand out when they come up to their portion of the presentation, so you'll have something to refer to. As is always the practice with these briefings, what we're really doing is introducing this item so that we can have some kind of response, some kind of questions are asked. There'll be at least two more times that we'll actually be back talking about CIP, if not more, so there, there's no action associated with this. This is just to begin the conversation, really to continue the conversation, because much of this, we actually started at your retreat for the, the budget development as we went through. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Brent, and I should say that we've got folks in the room, as we get into specific projects, or specific dollars, or questions, or any of those, we should be able to answer those. There may be periodically times where I'll interject something that, along the lines that Brent is showing as he works his way through this, so it's definitely going to be kind of a team effort as we move forward with it, and we will proceed, so thank you.
David's presentation is having some technical difficulties, but we have a few moments on that. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. You know, usually when you talk about capital planning and debt financing, everybody just sort of rolls their eyes. This is exciting stuff, but I will tell you, this is, in, in budget development, the capital planning is the foundational element of everything this organization does. It provides the funding, it drives the economics of our city as well as our region. So this is, is very, very weighty stuff, and certainly, I'm going to kind of pace myself fairly slow. As Bob mentioned, we have a significant team involved in developing this, and we've developed it very early in the year this year. We're a month or so ahead of schedule at this point. And so it's involved both, if I could quickly point out, Ian Ha from Budget, Luke and Ross from Public Works and Engineering have been sort of the head, key leaders of this, as they've gone through the departmental submissions and vetting those. So these, these are projects that have been vetted up to this point fairly well, but the, the ultimate vetting comes from council, and your desires to apply that to our proposals certainly subject to our affordability. So if we go first, real quick, a review, this was shown to you at our January meeting, the revenues and expenditures, just a quick review. As you see, it, we are showing a fairly preliminary revenue projection that's, that's a good, good growth number for us. You see that we do have to take something off of that for the schools, as well as Virginia's visit Blue Ridge of about $2 million. So really, our general fund comes down to about $264 million that we are looking to allocate out for all of our expenditures, both operating and capital. You've heard of our expenditure priorities, these are nothing new, these are, we've been dealing with these for a couple of years. But right now, the contractual inflationary increases we're experiencing, both in construction and operating, is significant. We are, we're dealing with those, but that, that is problematic for us, as has been last year, and we want to continue this year. Compensation remains a top priority as we compete with our regional partners, our regional competitors, and the private sector as well. One of the things, as you recall, we first have to look at our public safety plan, that we have a step plan now. The general population, we need to move to a minimum, as you have heard, and then general population increases. And then I think we will focus a lot on capital and some of those external agency requests this year, as, as you remember, we've, we've already been visited by a number of those with their concerns and challenges as well. So just a quick review, and as Bob mentioned, what's CIP, how's it get there? It's really kind of our, there's a lot of literature on what these should be, but it is our sort of self-developed plan around a lot of best practices that really is a tool for implementing our plans for growth and sustainability. What is a CIP project? We put these, these criteria on it. It's got to be $100,000 or more, expected useful life of five years or more. It can have other maintenance-type activities, but when they are significant, significant enough to be accumulated, for example, building facilities maintenance is such a large, now we're, we're trying to create a single capital improvement line for that, but have all the projects behind it instead of 400 projects up here to consider. But things like that, capital maintenance can be converted to a capital need. Some localities do not include some of their fleet and fire apparatus at the city, that, that number is a very large number anymore. We're talking million-dollar fire trucks and $2.2 million ladder trucks, and I believe, what's the last ambulance quote we got?
Three hundred.
$300,000, a little over 300. So we think those are big enough purchases that they should go out in our planning horizon, let you, you see those. And, and once again, sometimes we want to leave it open that there could be a project out there that it doesn't meet that first five, four sets of criteria that may, may, we may really want to include on here, and those would be some things like, we've already heard some of these additional capital needs from the community, outside partnerships, things like that. So in a case committee chaired by the city manager could bring one of those forwards to council as well. So that's kind of what our capital projects are. Where are we, or what did we do to get to this stage? Inventory of physical assets and prepare and needs analysis, that has been done at the departmental level for the most part at this point. We are now engaged, I believe we are engaged with facilities plan, with some consultants, to do a more comprehensive facilities review. That's mostly around our buildings, facilities, things of that nature. And then we will prepare a needs assessment for that. I would say we, we kind of have one today, but it's been done more informally, and this will be a more formal one, that I believe will be conducted within the next year, probably about next budget season as we, as we roll through. We review the capital requirements for approved strategies, master plans, policies. Once again, these come to the CIP from prior actions by council, or at least interest, consensus interest by the, the council and the community. We are now, at this point, preparing five-year cash flow projections for debt service within policy guidelines. We are identifying resources for cash funding. Basically, what you'll see now, that you haven't seen in the past, is a more comprehensive view. Historically, we've always shown you bonded debt projects. Now, we're looking at showing you also all the cash funded, as well as grants and other funding resources we may have, so a more complete one. And today, where are we? We are at prioritizing projects by year relative to cost and available resources, and I would say to David, as he speaks to you, to affordability as well. And I think that's a point. Then, you know, kind of between now and April the 15th, we will reconcile those differences of opinion, priority, things of that nature, and also look, once again, there are some projects that we may have talked about that is not on this plan at this point, and I think that will have some discussion as well with you. And then just how the schedule will run out, propose it along with the budget on April the 15th, as we've gone through a little more work with council. There'll be a public hearing on April the 25th, and then CIP adoption, I believe, is with, the same day as the budget adoption as well. So that will, at the end here, will sync up together CIP and operating budget for council's approval and adoption.
Well, go ahead. We want to try to let them get through this when they have questions.
There's a question about number five, with the prioritization of them. You mentioned affordability. How much consideration is being brought in regarding the, the materials for each of these kinds of projects, and whether or not a delay could end up with a significant cost increase like we're seeing with the bridge? No blame in place there, I just know we, we didn't have capacity at the time, but there are certain things that just by not being able to make them a priority now, we end up having to pay more for them later, and then our other priorities don't get done for even longer. So I just wonder, how much does that play into all of this?
Yes, and at the root of a lot of this, these departments and doing that figuring, is Luke here, and I'll let him answer that.
Yeah, thank you. Very good question. So your question, you're, you're talking about the availability of materials, how expensive they'll be in the future and things of that nature.
Yeah, the rate of inflation that we see with different materials.
Well, 20, year 21 and 22 will really solidify a pointed time in the construction industry where everything went up. Not only was steel going up, if you went to Lowe's or Home Depot to buy a 2x4, they were $12, they were $13. Those are things that previously, in the, in the years prior, that we were paying $3 and $4 for. So one of the unique things about that period of time is, we had a really steady increase in all the materials. So one of the things that I'll, we can talk about Wasena Bridge a little bit later, but one of the things we were looking at with Wasena Bridge was to rather go with steel girders versus concrete girders. There was some issues on whether we could get the concrete girders to the site efficiently and things of that nature. But as we were planning and going through the design process, we thought the steel girders would be the most economical. Obviously, steel went up, concrete went up, and just in that short period of time, we were called off guard, so to speak. But I can't say that going with another material like concrete, we would have been any better because there's steel that goes into that, there's certain manufacturing processes. So we've really seen a very unique period of time between 21 and 22. One of the nice things about my career, when I started in the late 90s, we've really had stable prices for about 20 years, so I could really tell you, really pinpoint where prices were going to go. And then we hit that 21, 22 period, and it just went, it went bananas. I mean, the industry basically turned on its head, and the last 20 years was no longer valid anymore. Everything was going up, all the materials were going up. So it was really challenging to say, okay, what is this material going to be? What's this material going to be? Because sometimes, in the case of Wasena Bridge, you're really between concrete and steel. You couldn't have done it in a wood product or anything of that nature. So I don't think there was anybody that could have imagined, you know, prior to 21 and 22, what could have happened in the industry. It really turned the industry upside down. Sometimes in the scope of a project, we might bring on a professional estimator, all of those folks for 21 and 22 were wrong. They weren't even close. And so we're still experiencing some of it today, but you know, that's a good point. That's something that we regularly look at when our, when we look at buildings or we look at bridges, is how can we deliver these products in a more efficient manner? But 20, you know, year 21 and 22 really turned everything on its head. So it's a real learning lesson that things can change pretty rapidly, and that the previous 20 years is no indicator for the next 20 years. So very challenging times, and certainly still very challenging times as we speak, so.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, just pointed out that the decisions that we're making are very difficult and priority some people may see based on need and think, well, this project should rank higher, but it's really, if we don't do certain things now, they're going to get much more expensive down the line.
Yeah, anytime you have a deferred maintenance of an asset, you're looking at cost versus time. In our industry, for a building, we like to keep renovations at a between a 25 and 30-year period. That way you keep with the, the current accessibility standards, you keep up with the current finishes in a, in a, in a area and things of that nature. But when you delay that, and then that's really when, when you start pushing that out to 30, 35 years, 40 years, it really starts to amplify because the accessibility standards are changing, the finishes are changing, the way we heat and cool buildings are changing. So one of the problems with deferred maintenance is you end up having to catch up at a certain point, and that is all about a cost implication.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Brent.
As you said, now we will kind of look at the review of what you adopted this past spring, when we adopted the CIP, and then the preliminary capital numbers we've worked through for presentation to you today in a little more detail. But, and I did forget to mention something. I think we talked about the collaborative process and such, but I wanted to shout out to Chris Chittum back in the back hiding. We didn't talk a lot about process. You know, the, the city, until a couple of years ago, only had an informal process, but that together mostly for the bond, debt-funded pieces. And Bob came in and wanted to say, we need a more comprehensive one, and Chris took it upon himself to go ahead and do a lot of the research, he wrote a white paper on it. So while he researched a lot of information, he also developed a process that's unique to our needs here in the city and such. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Chris that, because wrangling all those cats for two years has been very, very difficult, I'm pretty sure, working with the departments and getting all of this to the point we have it today. So I just wanted to thank Chris for that. So if we go into our first look, we won't spend a lot of time going through this unless there is some questions by council members, but this is what council approved with our last budget, and the 24 through, through 28. And the thing that I'd like to point out now, without, you know, certainly have, if anyone has any questions for review, but the yellow, the items in yellow related to the Wasena Bridge, the Melrose over Peters Creek Bridge, and the main library have had some altering to those as we see the next set of numbers. So just so you know what the changes are, or the significant changes as we move through, any- Any thoughts or comments as we go through? So once again, a pretty, oh, I'm sorry, two pages. Need to look at my notes. So thirty-five million dollars, almost thirty-six million dollars worth of projects. And I was wondering where the fire station number two was. So there's the other change as we look at what council adopted in May. So if no questions, we'll jump across to some of our current capital projects. And as we go through, I think, you know, I'll let the mayor decide if, if we have questions going through, but I'll just continue along, Mr. Mayor, unless stopped by you. So if we look at, and we'll have some of the more detailed informations about cost as we, as we get down the list, but the Wasina Bridge replacement that we're all familiar with and dealing with the fire facility master plan for station number two. I, I think a good thing there, the land acquisition is complete on site, demolition is complete. And, you know, we should have some RFP for design issued this coming spring. The low water bridge, Wiley Drive, we start in two thousand twenty-six, so a couple of years out. But some of these projects we've, we've wanted for a while, I think are coming to fruition. Additional, well, curb gutter sidewalk roadway street skate projects, things that we've been, had requests to look at improving funding for. And then the parks and recreation master plan. This is one that we've been dealing with for the last couple of years that we originally started during the pandemic with the Washington Park Pool, Richardson Whalen, the Parks and Recreation Headquarters and the Wasina Skate Park. Once again, any thoughts before I continue on, but we'll have some more detail as far as cost and, and timing of these projects. The global HR migration, global payroll and talent management. Once again, the upgrade went live in twenty-three. We are going through a huge ERP system now and then global or HR will be back in the mix after that to sort of update our, our, some of our payroll information systems. Bergland Center has a lot of needs that while they are considered an enterprise fund, most of the maintenance funds come from the city as some additional funds. As I mentioned, the ERP financial system. We are all very, I mean, this is, I'm going to take a minute. Nobody's excited ever about accounting systems. But I will tell you, this organization is thrilled about this system. It's going well right now. And we have a twenty-five-year-old system and usually you meet resistance from staff of going in and everybody's like, we can't wait. So I'm excited about that. It's, I know. So we'll, we'll keep moving. And the stormwater improvements. As once again, that those are, as you know, funded through the stormwater fees that we collect each year. So any, before we go, any questions to, to review as we leave the last year's CIP adoption? And so then, and I don't, Bob, do you want me to blow any of this up?
Well, they all have, they have the larger copy for, because we knew on the screen in order to fit what you see in front of you, which is multiple pages, the screens obviously are not going to have.
I would just ask, is this presentation online or how would the public see, try to view that?
Yeah, all of our budget, all our budget briefings are online after the meeting. So those will all be posted on there with it. And you can on your individual, obviously enlarge it.
Now if I trust myself, I'll enlarge this.
Yeah, I would not.
Yes, I'm not going to touch anything. So if you will look down your list, you'll see, as we mentioned before, this is a fully costed CIP. And what that means is all resources that come to the plan to fund capital are trying to be accumulated as we continue combing through some of our cash that we pay for stuff, we, we find a little more that meets the capital. But going forward, this should be the, the presentation that you see. As you go down the list, on twenty-five, you'll see bond, cash, grant, state and federal, you know, either, most of the time these, in the cash column, it'll be, you know, traditional cash contributions that came out of general fund years ago or some identified cash savings, contingency balances, things like that. And the grants are usually federal and state grants that we get for, for all through our organization operating. And what Mr. Rose is here to talk about with you today is the, is the bond column here as we, as we look forward. I would like to point out a little piece, and I don't know, Bob, if you wanted to, is this where you wanted to talk about your, at the very bottom, you'll see four hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars under the fiscal twenty-five bond funds. I know that's for.
Yeah, I'll touch on each of those three arrows if we want. So the, the first thing I want to do is kind of highlight something else that Brent said earlier, and we'll just look at the FY twenty-five piece as an example, but this is replicated in twenty-five, twenty-six and so on, which is one of the changes, as you all may remember, we made a few years ago is when we in the past used to present the CIP, all you really were seeing was the debt-funded portion of the CIP. You weren't seeing actually what was Pago or cash-funded parts of the CIP, nor all of the grants. And so a few years ago, I wanted to get that changed. That's the effort that Chris led. And so whereas in the past you might, and I'll use again FY twenty-five as an example, we might have been standing here saying, we have a CIP for forty-nine million dollars. Well, we actually have a CIP that has forty-nine million dollars of debt proposed, seven million dollars of cash proposed and almost twenty-eight million dollars worth of grants that will be used. So it gives a more complete picture of the CIP and where those fundings were from and, and how much we're spending on each of those. I did want to draw your attention to, and this will be, we'll repeat this in the next couple of slides, but where the red arrows are, this goes back to, some of this goes back to the items that Brent mentioned that were highlighted in the previously approved CIP. So for example, the Wasina Bridge replacement is highlighted. Obviously, the reason that one has the arrow next to it is, and the reason it was highlighted is, as you all know, it ended up costing significantly more than what we had put in the original CIP. So that was a case where something was in the CIP. When we actually bid for the project, it cost more than what was in the CIP. Therefore, we have to change the remainder of the CIP. And I'll come back and talk about that a little bit, a little bit further. But that's why that arrow is there. If you go down toward the bottom, the, the second arrow is associated with fire station number two, which is the Williamson Road Fire Station. This is one of two consequences of that increased cost associated with the Wasina Bridge. And as you all know, we've talked about previously, it required us to actually shift the construction date of the fire station. And you'll see later of the, of one of, of the library upgrade at Belmont. And we'll come back and talk about both of those. The good news is, and we'll talk about this in just a moment, we believe that we have found a way in which to keep both of those projects funded in that deferred year. So starting in twenty-seven and concluding in twenty-eight. And I'll talk about that in a minute about how we got, got there as we go through. The last one on this page that I'll highlight is the item that Brent just mentioned, which is at the very bottom. So with the adoption of our climate action plan, there are expectations in that climate action plan for building performance. So things like having EV chargers associated with the buildings, being able to do more upfits in terms of the quality of windows, maybe adding solar arrays, whatever those might be. And this is actually an idea that Luke had, the city engineer, which was actually accounting for, similar to what we do with our arts program where we basically say a percentage of, or a percent of the cost of the, the projects actually are set aside for this purpose. So what we've actually identified in here is each year we're proposing to take the equivalent of one percent of the bond-funded projects and actually go ahead and issue additional debt for those so that it begins to accumulate a fund that will allow us to actually add those elements or incorporate those elements into building design. And so you'll see that last item mentioned on each of those slides as we, or each of those years as you move forward. Typically what happens, and I'll use, I'll use fire station seven as an example. So fire station seven is, was designed to meet certain standards, certainly obviously the building code, obviously the needs of the fire department and others. But it also is built to meet certain energy efficiency standards and other kinds of things. And in, and one of the iterations, I think it actually had solar panels on it and some other items. And what typically happens in the past is it doesn't fit in our budget. So we have to start value engineering things out of that budget. And often those items that were designed to be more energy efficient or more responsive to climate were the things that were removed. This is going to help us keep that or lessen that from happening because we still don't have any more, we don't have any more money in those individual projects. So even though we're, we're using the calculation, there are some things like streets obviously are not going to have these elements attached to it. So it's actually accumulating into a fund. That fund will then be used hopefully to reduce that value engineering that occurs. So this will apply predominantly to our buildings, so the buildings that actually get constructed as we go, as we go forward. And again, this was, this is our first effort at trying to figure out how to start implementing the climate action plan tied to our buildings.
I just want to make clear, based on the way I heard it, that it's still in the design process that these things are being sought. And only when we know that we can't fund them under the current project, that we will look at this other fund. I don't want the public to see this and think, well, we're only spending this much each year on these things that are beneficial for climate environmental initiatives. This is really our backup for when we can't otherwise do it.
Correct. All our, yes, all our buildings are designed in accordance with the policies that you have put in place relative to building efficiency as well as the, the standards associated with climate change. This is there for those instances when we would otherwise not be able to fit it within the budget that we can actually do, do these items.
It would be nice to see with these other projects then for the elements where we don't have to go into this fund, how much of those are we committing towards these purposes too? So we could see, even though this is about five hundred thousand each year, it's definitely being committed. How much are we already able to do also?
Sure, sure. And we could, we can do that by, probably the easiest way to do that is to take one of our recently completed building projects and show what was, what was included in that design to be able to increase energy efficiency and other kinds of things with it and stuff. And we could also show you what actually had to be taken out, you know, just a couple of years ago, based off of our budget. So yeah, we can definitely do that.
Thank you for this.
I just had a quick question. Mr. Powell, is fifty million the largest in recent years that we've had to fund with our bond?
It probably is very close to if it's, if it's not. So yes. And one of the things you're going to see later in this presentation is, you know, we're, we're butting up against our ability not to borrow against our debt policies, but to be able to afford what we can actually borrow. So yes, what you're.
Is pushing the limit or is it?
Yes, what you're seeing is you're starting to see the, the costs of the projects and the needs continuing to increase. But we are limited. Even under this scenario, we'll end up in the budget, coming back to you all and talking about adding, and David will be talking about this a bit more, adding at least a million dollars a year into our debt service just to be able to get us to this point.
Yeah, I was wondering if that was coming because we normally stayed around thirty-two, thirty-five million and now we're.
And we've been very fortunate over the last few years, and you heard this from the school earlier in their presentation. In the last few years, we were able to do some, meet some of our unmet capital needs from before with ARPA funds. So we were able to do Eureka Recreation Center, for example, it's a thirteen million dollar project that if we hadn't had that federal, those federal dollars to do that, we would have had to figure out how to actually come, take that out of here. And you're going to see that when we get to that list of unmet needs, there are a lot of projects out there that are like that that we have yet to identify a funding source for as we go forward, even though, you know, we're spending over forty, almost fifty million dollars in, in debt.
Well, thank you, Bob. I told the mayor I'd be quick. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay. As I said, that's the twenty-five numbers of, and as we kind of shift our thoughts into some of the bond indebtedness numbers, you see, gosh, I can't even see that, that they're forty-two, almost forty-three million dollars in twenty-five, with twenty-six having about thirty-two toward thirty-three million. And certainly we can revisit any of these, twenty-seven, thirty-four million, twenty-eight, twenty-nine million.
And Brent, if I can, if you can stay on that slide, I want to come back to those two that are highlighted on here. And, and also kind of in response to what Brent just said also and to your, to the council member's question. So even though this next upcoming year, we've got forty-nine million, you actually see us start taper that back off. And that's again, the affordability piece. We actually have to start spreading some of that debt out a little bit further than we would otherwise want to do because we've got to be able to actually come up with the cash in order to be able to service the debt as we go forward. And again, David will have a lot more of this piece. The two items that are highlighted on here, get back to what I had indicated earlier, which is by the, so we have a, in the original, the current, I should say, five-year CIP, there was a bridge project that was identified as a relatively, I can call it a relatively small bridge compared to, compared to Wasina and Franklin, which was on Melrose. And that was our, that is our next bridge project in our, in our bridge program. However, it is not in imminent need of replacement. So we've actually moved that out beyond the, the five-year CIP that we're talking about. That has freed up seven point two million dollars that we're actually then able to apply to the fire station and to the Belmont Library. That's what's allowing us to be able to have a shot at getting those two projects done in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. There still will have to be some reduction in the scope of the fire station. If you remember, the fire station's kind of two phases, it are two components. It's a fire station and a training facility. And it may be that we have to pull back on the training facility in order to be able to keep it within budget. But it appears that we'll be able to get both of those projects done in twenty-seven and twenty-eight by moving that bridge project out into probably thirty is where we'll move it, just beyond this five-year CIP. So just wanted to kind of highlight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Here's the Richardson, I'll point out, Bob, the Richardson Whalen building as well.
Yeah, the Richardson Whalen one. So this, this is, so twenty-nine is our new, if you will, fifth year. So these are all new projects, projects that in the past have been identified in master plans or through some other kind of need analysis with these. A lot of them are our, kind of our standard projects, things like curb and gutter, paving, those kinds of things. But I do want to highlight a few projects that now start to make it on the list. So let me identify these and I'll come back specifically to Richardson Whalen. So the downtown pedestrian bridge renovation. So this is the bridge that is between downtown and Hotel Roanoke. And if you ever have the advantage of going across that bridge in a downpour, you will be able to see the amount of rain that actually enters that bridge. The window seals are failing on that bridge. And, you know, it's, gosh, probably twenty-plus years old, I think at this point. The elevator is currently out of service and is rather difficult to repair because of what is out of service associated with. It will be repaired, but it also needs to be replaced. So, so that's why that one is starting to make it onto the CIP. The Garden City Rec Center, I hope that none of you have ever had the, the need to go into the garden. The, the rec center is not in good shape. So it is in definite need of, of repair. Some would say it's in need of demolition and replacement. We'll see when we get to that point, what, what is in there. The MLK Bridge renovation. Similarly, if you had the opportunity to walk across the MLK Bridge, you will notice that the, the wooden surface on it is starting to kind of come apart on that and starting to expose bolts and some other things. I'll let the engineers figure out how they're going to repair that. But we have started funding this so that it can get fixed. The Mill Mountain Star rehabilitation, there's been a lot of conversation about the condition of the star and the need to make certain that it lasts us, you know, another seventy-five years. I would, I would do myself a disservice, maybe the city a disservice if I didn't indicate that we probably should, with this project, probably should look at some kind of community fundraising to accompany this. If we all know, it was actually the business community that actually paid to construct the star originally and then donated it to the city. But we have identified funding in here to be able to work on the star, starting out in twenty-nine. And then I'll move down to the Richardson Whalen because that's the next kind of big piece. And this is a decision point that we're going to have to, we're, we're not ready yet to make this decision. We've got to kind of wrestle with this. Under the, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, inside the ten-year window that was identified, which was two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-nine, the second pool is identified as being a project. And that would be the Fallon Park Pool, obviously. That pool, unlike the Eureka, so the Eureka Pool is proposed, or was proposed in the master plan and is being constructed in this fashion as predominantly kind of an aquatic sort of family pool. That's why you see a lot of the features about water features and the lazy, lazy river kind of thing in the, the zero entry. The Fallon Park Pool is designed more as a competitive swimming pool with it, which is why the cost is, is higher on it. We don't have enough funds in twenty-nine to do that pool and continue with the next phase of the Richardson Whalen project. So the first phase of Richardson Whalen is the, or the administrative offices. The future phases are being able to move all of our field operations there, so all the equipment that we have at the service center. And also there are some opportunities for, possibly for public-private partnerships with, like outfitters, for example, that might want to access the river, those kinds of things. So we've got, so at some point, we have a decision point to make that will, we are still working our way through. That's why it's listed right now. We know seven million dollars can go to those projects, but we've got to start thinking about which of those projects are divided up over a couple of years in there. And then the last thing I'll mention on this one is this is also, you'll start to see the fleet expenditure. So the money we're actually putting in fleet increasing. And again, that goes back to some of the questions that were asked earlier, which is the cost of fleet is just getting significantly higher. Our trash trucks are now costing us over a million dollars each. You heard some of the numbers given for fire trucks. And not only are fire apparatus costing us significantly more, we actually have to order them three, four years ahead of when we need them because it takes that long for them to get constructed based on supply chain issues, workforce issues and just the demand that, that exists out there. So we, we're still not meeting our fleet needs, but we definitely feel like we need to start adding more money into, into fleet. So I just wanted to highlight because these are, these are the first time really that we're showing some of these projects. I also want to make certain everyone knows this is the preliminary. I also want to make certain everyone knows this is the preliminary list, so we're going to be tweaking this list, and it's very likely this list will change in some way when we come back to you. At a minimum, we'll have to make a decision regarding that Richardson Whalen and Fallon Park Pool as we kind of work our way through that, through that process.
Mr. Cowell, while, excuse me, while we're on it and we're talking about the pools, let me ask you, do we?
Brent, can you go first?
Do we start, or shouldn't we start making plans to remove that cabin out there that's surrounded at the pool?
You're talking about at Eureka? I mean, you're at Washington Park?
Washington Park. Because I'm concerned that we recognize now, I know that this is deteriorating and it could come down any time, if somebody's out there and gets hurt or something happened, wouldn't we be held liable for that if we know that now?
Right, right now, what we've done is we have, we have placed a perimeter fence around the building so that folks cannot get to, easily get to the building because we are concerned about its long-term viability. I think, and we, we talked about this, I think it was at the last meeting, actually, that what we've done right now is, and I've, and I talked about this at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board a couple of weeks ago or a week ago, we're at the point now where we figured out a way to build the pool in that location that did not necessitate the demolition. So the next step in that process is, and we've secured the building, next step in that process is to find partners, grants, whatever that might be, if there is a desire to ultimately save that, save that building and/or repurpose that building. And I think you all have indicated, at some point, there has to be kind of a timeline attached to that, an end date by which that's determined. And that, and we shared some of that at the Parks Board meeting also. So I, I expect that there will be additional conversation very soon about what that looks like in terms of any kind of partners or grants or any of those kinds of things to move. And absent that, then I think you're back where you've been all along, which is a decision as to whether you keep that building or not.
So, Mr. Cowell, is that going to be the city's responsibility to try to acquire those grants and to do all of that, or did the community, the Friends of Evan Springs, have they agreed to, to take that on?
It, it'll probably be a combination of both, and the reason I say that is because many of the grants.
I have friends of Evan Springs. Washington Park.
We knew, I referred to it earlier, right? Many of those grants that are potentially available require the city to be an applicant.
Okay.
So, and then there are other grants, obviously, that come from private resources or others that may not require that. So it's probably going to be a combination of those, if, if they exist and if we are able to actually secure those, those funds. And remember, right now, there is no cost estimate at all as to what it would cost in order to stabilize it or reuse it. Those will be next steps in the process.
And what's the timetable? I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm just wondering, how long are we going to?
That will ultimately be up to you all because at some point, we have to make a decision. We have to make a decision, is this, you know, do we give this, you know, at least through the time that the pool's constructed so that that's known by the time the pool opens, or is this a shorter timeframe with that? I mean, that, you know, because we've done kind of our part of what we could do initially, so now it's really those conversations with those folks that are at the Friends of Washington Group and others, the Historic Preservation Groups that are interested in it. And, and again, some of those conversations have begun with it, but yeah, at some point, we have to say, okay, this is the timeframe that's available.
I think so.
Merrily.
When is that point? Yeah, I think.
Merrily.
Definitely just say, when is the point?
Merrily. Thank you for bringing up the topic, and it brings up a lot of ideas around it. And I expect the city will have to be a partner in some capacity in order for this cabin cottage to be sufficiently saved. What, what might be appropriate is even if we're able to set aside a small amount of money to look at the feasibility of what it would cost to do anything, what would partnerships look like with these groups? Because if something's going to happen, the city is going to have to have a seat at the table, as a number of the grants, I know that Bob has mentioned, there are a couple at the state level, but they require that a design be put in place, and I don't know that this group currently even has a capacity for that. But I, I'd like to have a report on what all of the options truly are, what the timetable looks like. I know up until this pool was being put in place, the cottage just sat there without any real plan for years, so I'd hate for us to be in a rush to take it down now that we have a different plan around the cottage. But if we can see what the true options are, then I think we can make an educated decision then. For version, small amount of funding, just to study what we can do.
I agree. Mr. Wolf.
I wanted to ask about the Amtrak Passenger Station because I noticed that's on our, our CIP for next G, or 2026.
Can we finish on the cottage piece first before we go?
Oh, if you want to, go ahead.
No, and it comes, because Luke brought up a point, and nothing has been said, and as we do sometimes, things get put out there and then it just dies out with no action taken. Either you accept what Luke is saying, or we just kill it and say, no, we're not going to do that. Because I just think that Bob is saying one thing that is up to council, and we're still looking at the management, and I'm still looking at whether Friends from Washington Park still wants answers. Is it their role? Whose role is it? And I just want some consensus being done as to where we go from here, whether it's to demolish the building, if that's going to be the action taken, at least we know it is. And if it's not, if there's funding to preserve it, we know that. If the city has to apply for grants, we know that. We just need to do something then to just keep pushing it out and pushing it out, and no action is being taken. So if we agree with what Luke is saying, I will second that motion, and we can vote to move on that feasibility or whatever. Or if there's something else that needs to be done, then we just, as a council, we just need to make that known, where we go from here as to get into the end result, if it is demolition, before we start building the new pool.
I'm happy to work on that with you, Councilmember.
Yeah. So I put that back to the council.
Who's the committee, who's going to be in charge of doing that?
And that could be, that could be decided later, but if it is to, to do what Luke's motion was, when he put that on the table, we just need to act on that motion. Either it's a yea or a nay on the motion.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I was just going to add, you know, we received a presentation, we received a pretty substantial list of potential funding opportunities. It seems to me that, you know, this has been set in motion, so if, if, whether it's the two of you want to meet with the Friends of Washington Park and review the funding options and bring them back, I mean, I, I, please let me finish. Okay. I agree that we need to move forward on this, but I think we need to be realistic about what funding options are available.
Correct.
So if they, if, if there's a study of this that says, well, these grants are available, if they don't really apply to this house and the city needs to foot the bill, that's helpful to know.
Then that's a different story, yes.
It's helpful to know.
Yes.
I also want to make sure that we be careful about piecemealing projects that we're going to be working on because we've got a list, a page long of remaining capital needs, and I don't have an understanding of how long these have been on our list, what the funding options are. Now, this is a smaller scale for sure, but I, at least to keep some generation of, of options before us on that particular project, I would certainly support a, a meeting that, that just looks at the funding options, that's very intentional about that and brings that back to us, and I think that could happen in a relatively short time.
And I agree with that because I am not saying that the city should put any money in this because of the projects that we have, that the burden should not be on taxpayers. I am one of those, but if grant money is available and they can apply for that and get it to secure that building, I'm for it. But if it's strictly on, on, on the city, I'm like you, no. That, that option comes off the table real quick.
Merrily.
And then the, then the other alternative, if, if it is to take it down, then you take it down.
Merrily, with your consent and council's approval, I'd be happy to work on this with council member Moon Reynolds and appropriate members of city staff because that, that is what we're going to need in order to have this conversation together. I think if we just have it with the Friends, we're not going to get much more information from where we are today, but if her and I work together with the appropriate members of city staff, we could report back to council, and I'd ask for, you know, maybe April or May, but I don't think I can have it by next month.
Yeah, no later than April. I don't think it needs to be.
But if we could have something back in April about what, what we think might be possible.
Well, I like that idea. Thank you all, to do that. You and Councilwoman, I thought you would do that and get back with us.
Merrily, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any final comments?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Peter.
Yeah, so my question was about the, the Amtrak station. Have we heard from Amtrak if that is something that is actually going forward? Is this something that, you know, we have it in 2026, but we've also been waiting for them for quite some time.
Yeah, we will, we are not proposing to move it further. You know, in the past, we've moved it while we await it kind of a response. Our feeling at this point is we should be able to now get a definitive response from, from Amtrak. All the things that were in motion because of COVID are, are beyond us now, and so, so no, that's now the next part of this conversation. And, and if, say for example, that that was, it was not, it was no longer, then I think what we would end up, in next year's budget, we'd be coming back and having a conversation with council that if Amtrak, and I'm not saying that they would say this, but if Amtrak for some reason said that they didn't want a station, didn't need a station, wouldn't staff a station, then I think the conversation we need to have is, do we still as a city want to have something there, a reception area, you know, waiting area, something to that degree, and what might that cost? Or if Amtrak did and they gave us very specific specifications, as they did once before, we will not be using the same specifications, then we would proceed with the construction project. So basically, what this CIP is doing is saying, we have now picked, that's the year that this is going to happen, and we'll start that process now to move in, in that direction. But depending on the response from Amtrak, we may come back next year with a completely different approach with it, so. But right now, we're anticipating proceed, Amtrak's going to staff it, but we're now at the point where we, we can begin to work on that.
Thank you.
Merrily, a very quick question on that. We've been asked and approached individuals about the access of restrooms as it relates to that platform, and any solution that we can find out around that, whether or not it's to make sure that the market building is accessible at certain hours. I know that's further away than I'd like for it to be, but, but something for people there until we have a station or no station in place to address the needs that people have brought up to us.
Yeah, I mean, that, and, you know, that's why, even if, even if, for example, we, Amtrak was not interested in a station, I think that would be a conversation that would, we would need to have here because, you know, do we build something, not build something, do we remodel the building that we have so that we could accommodate kind of a waiting area with restrooms? And then you also have to manage that because you've got, the train leaves at 6:00 AM, so, which is outside normal business hours, so you have to figure that piece out. But yes, I think that would be part of the discussion, whether or not Amtrak ultimately wants to have a station there with it, because there are no, there are no facilities really anywhere in that area because the, it's before the market building is open, when that first train out. Once the other trains arrive during the day, there's, there's, the market building is open and others, but the late train that gets in after 10:00, similarly, there's no, there are no available facilities at this point.
Mr. Sanchez Jones.
Mr. Cowell, is there any way that we could talk to Amtrak and make, to make sure that their bathrooms are clean? I've been getting a lot of complaints from people that use the.
Oh, on the train?
On the trains, is it?
I don't know.
All right.
I do have a question with regards to the Amtrak station. You mentioned renovations. If Amtrak does not want to be a partner in this facility, and you mentioned the renovations, will there be renovations made where we will be able to lease the building out to, to generate some revenue from office spaces in there?
Yeah, and that's a good question, that regardless of what, regardless of train station questions, you know, that building was acquired in its current state, and it, it needs to be refreshed, we'll say, remodeled, regardless, regardless of, you know, if we continue to use it to house Small Business Development Center and the Workforce Development and the HAT team, right now, the entire third floor is, is vacant, so there is the potential, if we're able to, you know, take care of all building code issues and those kinds of things, that you have some additional leasable space. Yes, that's what, and that's why these dollars, even if there was not a train station or a different kind of train station, these dollars are going to have to go toward remodeling the building for whatever use that, that it might entail, so yes.
I was just trying to see how we would bring back in the money that we've put in out to renovate the building.
Right now, we're doing that predominantly through our, it is enabling us to use the space as in-kind matches for grants with the Small Business Development Center and with Workforce Development. So even though we're not receiving any funds for it, it's allowing us to match grants associated with that value, but, but yeah, we can't really even use the third floor because the building just doesn't work from a accessibility standpoint as well, and part of the first floor even is not accessible. So if, when we remodel, I do think there are some options open up that we can't do right now.
But that won't take place for another two years based on here, unless we're able to, by windfall of money, move it up, move it back a year or whatever.
Correct. I mean, it, it works for us at the moment, but long-term, the building, the building needs to be remodeled.
But for, at the moment, with the city, by, by the expense of heating, utilities, the whole bit, and no money coming in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, Brent?
No comments on this one?
Nothing on this one.
Oh, but I did have a question about the Richardson Whalen Building. My question is, just refresh my memory, why did we, why is Parks and Rec Administrative Offices moving out there again?
Yes, sure. So we, we acquired, you may recall that we acquired the building and the complex, there's three buildings, and remember when we toured it, we, we looked at those three buildings. So, and the principal reason we acquired initially was to relieve pressure on the service center. Service center is adjacent 581, that's where we have all of our Public Works and Fleet Facilities, Parks, Stormwater, all, all of those out there, and, and it's always crowded and it's always in need of upsizing, upfitting. So we acquired it predominantly because there are those two large buildings that we could use for that piece. We also need to, there are administrative operations attached with that, obviously we have equipment, mechanics, those kinds of things, but we also have people, even with the field work, that are in, that are office workers. And so that administrative building, the first building we went into, that has to be redone for the administrative purposes. It's much bigger than what's necessary for those administrative purposes. That allows us to actually move the Parks and Recreation Administrative Staff out of this building to there to consolidate all of their operations together.
So you're consolidating back to where it was on Reserve Avenue when grounds maintenance was part of Parks and Rec.
Yeah, instead of having stuff scattered all over a couple of buildings.
Yeah, and that's when we scattered it and moved the administration from then in, in 2000, 1999 to 2000, and moved them here, and moved grounds and administrative staff out to Public Works. So in essence, you're moving them back.
Yep, and getting everybody, getting everyone consolidated.
Putting them back together again.
Getting them all consolidated. There is still, I think even with that, there still will be room on that property to be able to look at some, again, public-private partnerships that could involve leasing, and the most obvious is really kind of an outfitter that actually would be able to use like kayak rentals, those kinds of things on, on the river and stuff. So we'll look at those opportunities.
Yeah, I love the way you're generating revenue. I love to hear you're generating revenue. Okay. Always looking for money.
All right, Brent.
All right, go to the next one. And here is, as, as I think Mr. Cobb has referred to, these were ones that we could not fit into the list of what we thought our cash flows would be to service debt. So I don't know, Bob, would you?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would say on this one, maybe a couple of things I'd say, one is, as, as lengthy as this list is, it is not exhaustive, and it is ever-growing. I will also say, that's the way it is everywhere. I mean, think of your own house, you never run out of lists for what you need to do in your house, no, no different here. That list, you know, we have, we, we have facilities here that, you know, are 80 years plus old, some, some older than that, and, and projects on this list probably run from a couple hundred thousand dollars to tens of millions of dollars. A few of these have really, really rough cost estimates built around them, many of them don't. We just know that they're, a good example of that is the, the Adult Detention Center improvement. So we're going through an assessment right now with the sheriff of, and a consultant So we're going through an assessment right now with the sheriff of, and a consultant that's actually reviewing the entirety of the jail to accumulate what is the cost associated with what's left. We're working on those immediate things, like the kitchen right now is under, under reconstruction and a few of those, but the, but there's a lot of big items in there. So, so that's an example of one that hasn't been yet fully developed. There are others, again, that we have a pretty good idea of what those costs are. There are projects on here that come out of adopted master plans, so like the recreation centers, for example, and the fire stations, then there are projects that come on here just because we know there's need, like the municipal buildings and facilities, so that's where we take care of buildings like this one, replacing air conditioning units, elevators, those kinds of things. And, you know, that, that list itself, again, probably tops, probably tops 50, 60, if not more, million off of this entire list, and, and probably ever-growing. So these are projects that are just kind of parked there, that as we build out CIPs in future years, we're going to have to look at how we pull these in and go through the assessment that Brent kind of walked you through of how we do that.
Mary Lee.
Yes, sir.
I can't help but notice the Jefferson Center is one of the projects on there. We did have a request earlier this year for emergency funding. I just wanted to know what's the status of that and how are we trying to do that?
Yeah, we've, so we've had, we've had additional meetings with our, I've had an additional meeting with Cyrus and Witt and Brian Mann, was a part of that. And then Brian's actually had subsequent conversations. We have another meeting scheduled later this month with them. I will say that what was presented to us as emergency needs did not qualify in our mind as emergency needs. They included things that need to be repaired, like carpeting and those kinds of things, and certainly there were elements that are more urgent than others. So, so right now, there, there is no funding dedicated, nor is there an obligation. Remember, there isn't, there is currently a contract with them to do that. And as we talked about in the retreat, there's really a need to talk about the whole arrangement, about how that will, and that's what we'll be talking about then in February. This particular item, which includes the emergency pieces that were talked about, is, you know, approaching $9 million associated with it. And, and we do own the building, right now, they're responsible for maintaining it. They've indicated to you and to us that they cannot do that. And so we've got to figure out a way, just like all these other buildings, to figure out what's next with that piece. But I'll know a little bit more when we meet with them again later this month, but right now, it's on the list, and that's as far as we can get at this point.
Yep, I understand that. I kind of think of it as the emergency funding as part of it, and then the, the capital outlay is a later type of-
Yeah, and part of what I'm trying to, what we'll do at the meeting coming up is, again, the list that we saw of what was, what was presented as emergency items, most of that did not qualify as emergency, so we're trying to tease out, is there really something in there that really absolutely demands? In other words, they would have to close their doors tomorrow if this wasn't addressed and stuff, and that's what we're trying to figure out with it. And I'm sure it's less than the 300,000 that was, was presented, so. And if, if that's the case, then we may be able to come up with funding to take care of a smaller piece of that. Although, again, we're doing so understanding that that is not, that is not concurrent with the agreement that we have with them, so we'll have to figure that piece out as well.
I just want feedback on that as well. I know when they, when Mr. Price came, he talked about the immediate need or the urgent one, which was about 200 and some thousand dollars. I guess that's where my focus has been on, is trying to see how the city can help fund the urgent needs. And I think you just, was that part of the emergency ones that you said that not?
Yes, one in the same, yes. And when we asked for more detail on those, we did not believe that that list as prepared actually met that, that status of being urgent. There are some things in there that might be, and that's what we're trying to figure out when we meet with them later this month.
Okay, because that's what I was looking at, and plus, I think they were doing a capital campaign-
Correct, correct.
Which I, which I think is great, and I'd like to see where they come in on, on that capital campaign. And the other thing is on this remaining capital needs, you have them here, and I know they're not in any particular order, but I would like to see the urgent ones on, you know, your remaining capital needs, what is really urgent, and then the important. And that helps me as a council member to see the urgency in which ones we should be really focusing on trying to fund or find funding for.
Yeah, and we, and we can definitely take a shot at that.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, trying to identify which ones are more urgent than others, I think we can, I think we can do that, kind of as a, almost a, like a, not a priority list, but sort of a magnitude of significance attached to it.
Yeah, it's almost like a priority, but it puts it in, how urgent is this? Is it going to, like you say, close the doors today? Can it wait, can it be put back? And some of these cannot afford to be put back because they've been put back for so long that we're looking at them now as a part of that problem that we face.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more question or one more comment on the Jefferson Center. It would be helpful to know where the board is in terms of not only their progress in their capital campaign, but what kind of efforts they're looking at or business plan they have going forward. I know there was some conversation about, you know, one of the reasons where we arrived where we were is because the model that was being used wasn't as effective as they thought it would be. So I'd love to hear an update from their board on where they are with a new model and proposals related to that. The other piece of that, and this is true of any of these, but if you make an investment of $6 million, you want to make sure that you can sustain that investment. So it's not every five years, $6 million because of deferred maintenance. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I also know that the, the community made a significant investment in renovating and supporting financially the Jefferson Center, which is why I think it's so important. So the sustainability and then hearing from the board would be really helpful. The only other thought I had, and I appreciate it, Ms. Moon Reynolds asking about how long these have been on the list, what their sense of urgency is and cost. You identified a couple of things on the CIP that were smart scale funded. Could we also get an update on what's being proposed in terms of smart scale funding throughout the region? Because I know that's a regional effort, and the commission works on that. But it would be helpful to know what they're looking at and what we're advocating for as a city for capital improvement projects that might access smart scale funding. I know we've got one major one on here, but it'd be good to know what others are kind of in the pipeline.
Yeah, we, we can do that, and actually, we've been trying to find a slot for Jeremy to come over and actually do a presentation overall of the work of the Regional Commission, as well as the TPO and others, so it could be a part of that conversation too. I'll admit that based on our agendas coming up, it's been very difficult to find a slot that we can fit him in, but yes, that we certainly can do it a couple of different ways.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Brett.
Okay, and finally, you'll switch speakers here in a second, because if you look back on Slide 14, you saw that what we're looking at is about just short of $300 million over the five-year period. And with that, how do we pay it or pay for it? And with that, I'd like to introduce David Rose with Davenport Public Finance, who's an old friend of the city's, as well as many of us in the state of Virginia and surrounding. So David, if you're ready to go over some of the financing numbers, I'll try not to destroy the podium on my way out. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be here again. I typically find myself here several times of the year, and especially here in the early part of winter as we try to help talk through your upcoming funding of your budgets and how to incorporate some of these things. So I shouldn't be too long this afternoon or this late morning here. You should have on the screen, presentation, let's see if I can get that right. Okay, all right. Again, Mayor, members of council, everyone should have a hard copy of what is going to be up on the screen, so I'll just wait a moment.
And similar to the other, the other presentation, this is what you received, nothing, nothing is different. We just want to make sure you have a hard copy in front of you.
Yes, okay. Again, for those in the audience, I'm David Rose, I manage the practice at Davenport. Even though we have an office here in Rich, in Roanoke, I'm out of Richmond, and that's come here on a regular basis. So we've been asked, as we typically have year in and year out, to take a look at your evolving five-year, rolling five-year CIP, talk about strategies to make sure all of the projects that you identify ultimately are funded when you need them to be funded, but at the same time, we also don't go out and sit on a bunch of debt and pay debt service before we need to, because again, that can be very expensive, hurts the budget, and of course, has any cascading impact. What we have done then is work closely with your staff, which we think really is excellent, and made sure that any of the recommendations you're going to hear today also follow all of what we call your self-imposed financial policy guidelines. I didn't put it in here, but the city is highly rated in terms of the national credit rating agencies, and the reason for that in part is that you follow your policies, you've got stringent policies, and you also, year in and year out, produce what we call a structurally balanced budget, which means that your recurring revenues meet or exceed your recurring expenditures, including funding for all of these. So with that as a background, the last bullet point there, this five-year going forward proposed CIP has almost 230 million of borrowed projects. And as Bob said, that's just one part of it. You've also seen cash funding, which is considerable, as well as grants and things of that nature. So I'm going to touch on today the borrowing program. This might be the hardest part. Do you want to help me there? I'll, I'll let you do it, it's a little bit, it's like threading a needle. All right, I'll let you, you want, you want, okay. So again, what we've done here is roll up, if you would, the borrowing program. And so what is adopted historically by your 2024 fiscal year, that's going to be part of our funding. And then we will ultimately fine-tune what you're going to see in a few minutes by virtue of what you work with staff on over the next month or two to get to us. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. You'll notice here at the very bottom, we have what's called self-supported projects. Stormwater, that's been there for several years, that is a separate funding mechanism. We do that simultaneous with our other borrowings to take care of costs of issuance, meaning to be as efficient as we can. But that stormwater will not count against any of the ratios I'm going to show you and have shown you, because again, it's a special, separate user fund, and again, doesn't rely on general fund revenues and has not since the program really got started in earnest several years ago, and we are part of that. Okay, any questions? I'll move on, Mayor, okay.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I see under the adopted piece for the city general projects, it was 16.6 million. And then it's, it's more than pretty much like doubled for the projects?
And a lot of that has to do with timeframe, and again, because some of those projects, that was what was adopted and necessary in the fiscal year '24. But for example, and Bob, correct me, and Brent, but like the Wasina Bridge, for example, is a part of that. So we know, and we even have some funds available going into the next few months. So all of this, as I said earlier, Councilwoman, is to make sure that no projects get stopped as they're in progress. We also don't want to be in a mode where we're borrowing a lot of monies just sitting there. We're trying to avoid that. So it's a, you're going to see a little bit of our thinking in a few moments, okay? All right, so goals and objectives, that's great, Brett, yes, we'll take it with you, good. Basically, again, there's a number of things as it relates to our strategy. As I just moment, mentioned a moment ago to the Councilman Reynolds, we want to make sure that all the projects for all of the various departments are there when they need it. We also want to make sure, as again, we're in the financial policies that you've created, we're in those guidelines within. We also want to make sure we mitigate the stress on the future budgets. And you're going to see a little bit of the work in progress there. And then lastly, as I indicated, your credit ratings are literally one step away from AAA, which is the highest you can get. There are no gradations of AAA, it's simply AAA. AA2, AA pluses, that's the different nomenclature of the three major rating agencies. One does all caps, one does some, you know, caps and small caps, what have you, but you're all basically a step away from AAA, and you've moved up over time, and that's important. And in spite of COVID, you've not taken any steps backward. So we want to make sure all of that continues. All right, next page. So what is our approach, our approach is, if you would? It's really a three-pronged approach here for what we'll call the long-term bond-funded projects. We continue to do that over a 20-year period. For all of the planning in here, we've assumed it's a fixed rate at 5% and a level debt service. I can tell you right now, right now, we are borrowing fixed rate well under 4%. We'd rather put it at 5%, just in case things move away from us. At the same time, we are not soothsayers as to what the market will look like, but it is, again, very solid at this point. The second part is the fleet. Those equipment typically have anywhere from a five to 10-plus year period of time. So we have, we've moved to a seven-year repayment. We think that is on the more rapid side, and we've used an interest rate again for this above the current market for your benefit. And then lastly, something we've done very successfully that you allowed us to do several years ago, and that is, we call it a line of credit. That is basically where we get ourselves funding, put on the shelf, if you would, and as we need those monies, we draw them down. We've done that successfully, in fact, at points, we've called that sort of a just-in-time funding. We did a little review, I presented it last year. By doing that just-in-time over one five-year period, we avoided a little over $15 million of debt service in a five-year period. So it has worked very well for us, and we'd like to recommend with your blessing, staff has underscored this, that we continue to move with elements of that. And you're going to see what that does, particularly when it comes to the impact of helping to minimize, we can't avoid, but minimize those extra dollars we're going to need in subsequent years for debt service.
Mayor, I just have a quick question on that for you.
Yes, go ahead.
So if we are at a fixed rate of 4.75%, I'm trying to understand why would we go 1% higher if it's fixed?
Oh, okay, so, great question. We've purposely, for planning purposes, said, what if it costs that level of money for our budget? Ultimately, because we don't know, when we borrow the money, exactly what it's going to be, it's no different than you, if you go out and do an improvement on your home, and they say it's going to be $5,000, you may put an extra $500 aside as a contingency, and you think of it as $5,500 because you don't know the exact amount, that's what we're doing here.
So you're using the interest rate to try to cushion that-
That's exactly right.
... dollar amount, okay, I was just trying to make that make sense to me.
And we've always done that, and so, again, I'm hopeful that we'll continue to find that we've built up even more contingency than necessary. But I think it's important for council to understand, we're not going to borrow anything above what the marketplace is. We've just, for planning purposes here, showed you what happens if, let's say, again, it costs us 4.75% versus more like 3.75% in the current market.
Okay, thank you, because that's probably helpful for some folks watching, they probably don't understand that.
Exactly, yes, okay. All right, so next page. With regard to this capital improvement fund strategy, I've given you, I think, the essence of it. Just wanted, again, to lay that out here and just make sure everyone follows that there's one other important part to this overall plan, and that's that number two. You have historically a piece of debt that is due next April, and it's little of a bump, if you would, in the overall debt portfolio. That's debt that you borrowed years ago, just happens to be the way it's set up. We're going to recommend, and you're going to see what happens here, if we smooth that out over the next several years. If we did not have that smoothed out amongst everything else, the city would have to come up with roughly 3.5 million extra dollars of debt service next year, meaning the '25 fiscal year. That makes no sense, and in fact, we're going to be able to smooth out something that right now is at a 5% interest rate, and we think it's going to come in well under 4%. So we're going to gain the benefit of smoothing that out and bringing the rate down for what is essentially something due in about 14, 15 months. So I wanted to point that out as well. Okay, next page. Okay, some key observations, I think, not to overly belabor this, but we've worked closely with staff, that timing of needs will evolve, and you'll continue to give us that. And that's why we're not recommending that we jump right into borrowing, because again, we want to make sure you work through with your staff the schedules that are appropriate. But suffice it to say, the timeframe that we're thinking about here keeps us all in, in the mode where we're getting dollars when we need them for the projects that you've identified. Okay, next page, if you would. So what is the, the plan for FY '25? It's really two parts. One is that line of credit, we'd like to continue that, that's about 57.5 million. We can give you the details in the appendix of how that- We can give you the details in the appendix of how that's rolled up, but basically, it's the '24 fiscal year needs and the '25 fiscal year needs. But it's set up in such a way that when you look at the history of Roanoke and its capital funding, you typically don't spend that type of money in one fiscal year. So the thinking is, let's not borrow all of it upfront. Let's have the ability to borrow all of it, but not commit ourselves in terms of the debt service. That's what a line of credit really is. Think of it, if you're fortunate to do an improvement, as I said to Councilman White Boyd, let's say it's, again, the, the home improvement example, rather than you just handing a contractor $5,000 and automatically having to borrow that $5,000 and start debt service, think of it as having a construction loan, and you just draw down and give that to the contractor over a year as you need the money, so you don't start paying the debt service on that $5,000. That's what the line of credit is, and it's been very successful for you. The second part, which we would do somewhat almost around the same time, is the rolled-up permanent financing, because we do know there's some things that will absolutely be spent over the next several months, one of which is that stormwater project piece, then the schools project. We've worked closely with schools, met with them on multiple occasions, and continue to. That 12.8 is really a couple of pieces rolled together. And then there's the fleet projects, as I said, that'll be put together. And then finally, that roughly, that restructuring. So we get the economies of scale of doing all of that as one financing, roughly about $21.5 million. And what we can then do is, once we get the money borrowed, different pots can be accounted for by your staff. We've done that before. So again, for example, the fleet is done at seven years. Some of these other things are done at a longer period. So all of that, you're going to see the impact of in the next moment or two. Okay. You would, Brett. So this is where the rubber meets the road. This is your current debt service. If you look at fiscal year '24, we're in right now, you have about $29.5 million of existing debt service. That's what is part of your overall budget that staff takes care of. Having said that, we're going to borrow in '25, so there's no projected additional debt service in '24. That's why that column B has got basically a blank to it. That said, though, in '25, you'll notice that the debt service drops down to about $28.5 million. Had we not incorporated the restructuring, that $28.5 million would look something like $32, $33 million. It would have been a $3.5 million bump. So you're seeing the end of the sausage making, if you would, because if I had shown that to you, you'd say, my gosh, we got to come up with a lot of dollars. The restructuring layers in that $3.5 million over the next five or six years. So what you'll find, if you look at column A, is it's a nice drop down from $29.5 million all the way down by the end of the decade to a little over $21 million. We like to see that. That's a healthy structure and, and one we want to continue. However, column B, after we've worked in our strategy, we're still looking at significant new debt. And you'll notice by the end of 2030, that is going to be a total debt service of about 36, almost $37 million. Again, you may move a little slower. We may do some more fine tuning, which we will, if you still have me here and I'm still here, or whoever will do that. But the important thing is column D. This is really the rubber meets the road. This is for everyone's benefit what we have. And what you'll see here is, if we set this up properly, we really effectively, over the '25 and '26 years, fiscal years, it comes to about $2.3 million of added debt. It's to Bob's point, when you average them, and we'd like to think about this that way. We'd like to see the city basically put about $1 million aside at this fiscal year, '25 coming up, another $1 million in '26, because interestingly, if we do that, then we find that we really are taken care of for like the next three years. Nothing is needed in '27. More than likely, I'll still recommend another million, because in '28, we need about $2 million. So if you look at here as a theme here, and that is, we've basically been able to get everything layered in in such a way that we don't have any, we'll call it rate shock, if you would, to the general fund. Now, should there be some additional projects that could change this? Should some projects move slower? That'll change this. And then finally, the interest rates that I've used are higher, so hopefully, the real costs will be less. Okay, I'm almost done. Page nine. We just mentioned you've got certain rating criteria, and one of those are dictated by your financial policies. This financial policy is what I call your credit card. How many pennies per dollar or how much pennies annually of your budget goes to debt service from expenditures? And basically, you say you're not going to go past 10 cents on every dollar. The good news is, you do about 8%. With the interest rates elevated, it looks a little higher than the 8%, but still a cushion. In reality, we see ourselves being flatlined, and that's good. We don't see ourselves putting more, more, if you would, pressure on the overall general fund, and that's important. Next page. Same thing with another criteria. Debt service to what we call assessed value. That's just the amount of debt you have divided by the overall real estate and taxable debt, taxable assessed value, excuse me, of property. We've assumed a low yield, if you would, of future growth. It's been considerably lower than reality. And once again, it's pretty flat. That is another good sign. So from that perspective, we like the way we're going. We like the fact you're able to, to layer all this in responsibly if we follow the plan. So last page, I'm almost done. Here we are, it's February 5th. We're presenting this strategy, if you would. We think about it for multiple years, and that's why you'll be able to look back on this and say, okay, Davenport is working closely to recommend that if we think about every year, having about $1 million more towards debt service on a budget that's certainly, as Brett said, away from schools, some $250, $260 million, we think it's doable. But again, no slam dunk, it's, it's not easy, but it's, we think it's doable. So we'd be coming back in terms of refining all this sometime after the springtime, basically, once you get your budget done, once you decide exactly on those projects. And our thinking is, late spring, early summer, we'd move forward with these various two-part approach. One last thing I should point out, Mayor, which we've done in the past, if indeed, any of your debt is refundable purely for savings purposes, we will make sure that we incorporate that. That's just a positive. Would love to be able to say, there's some things there. We'll monitor that accordingly. With that, Mayor, I appreciate being in front of you again and other council members, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any question, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to know, under the city's policy, what is our debt policy percentage? Is it the 10 here or is it the 12?
It's 10. It's 10.
And how close are we bumping up against the 10?
So, so we're about 8%, give or take. We show that with certain growth assumptions, which we think are conservative, will be maybe about 8.5%. I really don't believe we're going to get above about 8%. I think when you, when you, when, again, when I mentioned earlier to one of your colleagues that we have inflated the interest costs, which inflates the debt service for all those years, I think if we come in closer to where we've typically been, we, we could be even below 8%. So I think we'll be in that range.
Okay, because I think at one time, we were kind of bumping up way up.
Yes, we were. In fact, that's a great point. And that's part of why we recommended some of our strategy, and that's actually helped reduce it. And so again, that's that avoided $15 million that would have been there. So to your point, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Any other question for members of council?
The, the one other piece I would add is to, to what David has talked about with that, looking at around $1 million additional each year in order, for debt service in order to achieve that. The good news is that actually going into this budget year, we had already projected somewhere around $850,000 of additional debt service. So it won't be too painful for us this year to close that gap in the first year, to be able to get that $1 million set aside. It also means, though, whereas in the past, we might have used some of that excess debt service to do kind of cash payment on certain projects, we will not be doing that because we're actually building up a fund in order to be able to use to kind of soften that impact as we go along. There'll be other cash-funded projects, as are shown on the CIP, but not using that excess debt service the way that perhaps we had in the past.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
And our, well, you want me to do next steps? Brett, are you going to do next steps? All right, I'll do, I'll do next steps here, because this is the end. So our next steps are, as, as David had already mentioned, is obviously, we'll continue to have conversations with our financial advisors as we kind of wrap up sort of this strategy and move forward with what ends up getting placed within the, the CIP. As mentioned earlier, we'll be back before you all a couple of times, talk further about the CIP as we try to complete what we're doing. Remember, ultimately, what we're going to be asking for is really the, the approval of FY '25. That gets incorporated into your budget, but it's with the understanding of what we're going to do over the next four-plus years after that. But it's really that FY '25 is the, is the key piece. And then we will continue, we'll be back here before you all, I think, in March, April timeframe, I think. I'm, I'm thinking of the year-end piece of this, so, because we have to wait till all of the audit pieces finish. So we'll be back before you with year-end funds that we will propose, as we always do, about how to use those, some of which will go to some of those cash-funded CIP projects. So we'll be back here with, with that information also as we, as we go forward. So, so those are some of the next steps as we move in. And in between now and then, there'll be all kinds of questions, and we'll be happy to answer those individually, or we can come back with other information as a group as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby, is Ryan going with us in the closed meeting?
Yes, yes, for the, the item that we have that is with the city attorney's information on Hotel Roanoke Conference Center.
All right, so that'll do it. Council will be in recess until, uh, 2:00.